Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm calling the July 22 City Council Meeting to Order. This meeting is being held one week later than normal due to adjustments made to the July schedule for the Fourth of July holiday. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings, and both staff members, staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. First item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We republed, which stands, one nation, God, indivisible, infinite and just. Obviously, we have a lot of fun stuff at the beginning of the meeting, because the gallery is full. So, thank you all for coming and joining us tonight. We'll have a few items of special business before we get into our regular business. The first item is ID 1698, Sister Cities Commission Friendship Day Proclamation. And I'd like to invite Sister Cities Commission Co-Chairs Stephanie Angula and any other Sister City Commission members in attendance to come up to the lectern over here and join me. Thank you all for coming. This is about half of our Sister City Commission. We have Sheri, Victor, Wendy, and Stephanie, and they have been doing an awful lot of work over the last year, some special projects with Chef Chauvin, and it's been busy, busy, busy. But today, we're here to talk about World Friendship Day. Whereas the International Day of Friendship, also known as World Friendship Day, was proclaimed in 2011 by the UN General Assembly with the idea that friendship between peoples, countries, cultures, and individuals can inspire peace efforts and build bridges between communities. And whereas the city of Issaquah values its international friendships and its formal sister cities with Sundal, Norway, established in 1991, and Chef Chauvin, Morocco, established in 2006, and whereas the city of Issaquah Sister Cities Commission is in place to help foster the sisterhood relationships, and whereas the commission works to increase the knowledge, goodwill, and understanding of the world through people-to-people diplomacy, education, and cultural exchange. The city of Issaquah has a long tradition of promoting diversity, equality, fairness, and friendship. And whereas Issaquah is strengthened by the strong role friendship plays in building trust, promoting peace, and bringing people of different cultures together, now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim July 30 to be Friendship Day in the city of Issaquah, and I invite the community to join me in celebrating and fostering friendships locally and globally. Would you like to say a few words? Move on up.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Polly. Thank you, City Council, for this recognition and this proclamation for International Friendship Day, or I'm saying it incorrectly, International Day of Friendship. There we go. We'd like to thank you again for your continued support of the Sister Cities Commission, and most importantly, thank you for recognizing Issaquah's continued commitment to our two sister cities, as Mayor Polly said, Sundal, Norway, and Chef Chauvin, Morocco, and what those relationships represent. For our commission, the work that we do together and the spirit that really drives the decisions that are made and the efforts on behalf of the city are from a welcoming, open spirit of international friendship that fosters goodwill and centers human connection across all cultures. Thank you very much.
It's been very, very heartwarming. The next item under Special Business is ID 1699, the National Night Out Proclamation. And I would like to invite Councilmember Hunt up to give that, and Police Chief Paul Ashwan, and Commander Travis Neese to the lectern. No, Travis, nope, got a head shake. Okay, Chief is here. Thank you, Chief.
Whereas the National Night Out is a community-building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships annually on the first Tuesday of August, and whereas the 41st Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Issaquah to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community drug and crime prevention efforts, and whereas the city of Issaquah and the Issaquah Police Department play a vital role in crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Issaquah and are supporting National Night Out 2024 locally, and whereas it is essential that the city of Issaquah community be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Issaquah, and whereas the police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. And now therefore I, Councilmember Victoria Hunt, on behalf of Mayor Polly of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim August 6, 2024, to be National Night Out in the city of Issaquah, and invite the community to join me in celebrating and participating in festivities that raise awareness for this very important cause.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. A lot of people don't know, but National Night Out started in 1984, was the first one that they ever had. And there are a couple of different pieces that some people don't know and components to National Night Out, and one is the Project 365, which was introduced in 1994. And what Project 365 is, the opportunity for communities to come together with the neighborhoods and with the local law enforcement and decide one project or area that the city feels is a needs or is necessary to improve for crime in their area. And then, over the next 365 days, what that looks like and the things that were taken in steps collaboratively to prevent and improve that in your community. And so, it's that, and it's also an opportunity for us to identify and introduce new projects and new opportunities for crime prevention, and to be able to work with and learn with the communities. And we appreciate this opportunity. It's always the second, or sorry, the first Tuesday of August every year. Some different communities participate and actually take part in, like Texas does it in October, but the national one is done on the first Tuesday in August always. And so, we will have that event, and we appreciate always your support with the proclamation as well as you guys attending. I see many of you in your communities, and we're excited that we have new ones that have joined as far as neighborhoods this year. So, we're super excited to be able to participate and attend many of those, as well as the one we're having on the back of City Hall here at Memorial Field. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Chief. Next, under Special Business, we have ID 1700, which is Park Ranger Day Proclamation, and Councilmember Joe is going to be presenting this one.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I'd like to invite Park Ranger Alex Anderson and Summer Ranger Casey Shane to the lectern.
I was just going to do that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Whereas World Ranger Day is celebrated worldwide on July 31 to celebrate the work rangers do to protect the planet's natural treasures and cultural heritage, and whereas the city of Issaquah's park ranger serves as a steward and ambassador of the city's parks, trails, and open spaces, the ranger position is intended to promote a safe and welcoming park experience through professional interaction with park patrons, and whereas the park ranger is responsible for the routine patrol of approximately 1,800 acres of public lands owned by the city of Issaquah, which includes 23 parks, two cemeteries, native growth protection areas, natural resource conservation areas, wetlands, open space, and trails, and whereas the park ranger works collaboratively with the Issaquah Police Department, Washington State Agencies, the King County Sheriff's Office, and Regional Animal Services of King County to resolve park issues, and whereas the park ranger provides education of local codes and laws and responds to calls for service and investigates concerns relating to our park areas, and whereas the park ranger is sometimes the first point of contact for unhoused individuals in city parks, in partnership with human services, the ranger provides assistance, guidance, and care through our homeless outreach program. Now therefore, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim July 31, 2024, to be Park Ranger Day in the city of Issaquah, and we all invite the community to join us in thanking our park ranger team for their service and outstanding contributions.
Like saying word?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll say the same thing I always say, we don't do this work for the recognition or for the accolades, but we really do appreciate it. We work hard out there, and it's always nice to be recognized, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Joe, and thank you to our park ranger team. The next item under Special Business is ID 1748. This is the Young Artists and Authors Showcase Recognition, and these are our top recipients here this evening. So, I'd like to invite Sister Cities Commission Co-Chair Stephanie to come up to the lectern, and I'll join you, but you're in charge of this one.
Okay, thank you so much for being here tonight. A little information, this is our third annual Issaquah Youth Artist and Author Showcase that we're conducting, and this is something that we do in partnership and in connection to Sister Cities International. There's a different theme every year, and this, our third year here, Issaquah participating, happened to be "Climetscape: Resilient Cities for Tomorrow's Climate," which was a very well-received, and we had a lot of youth respond to that specific topic, so that speaks highly of our Issaquah youth. Really quick, an opportunity to say thank you, of course, to our mayor and city council for your continued support. We'd also like to recognize our partnership with the Arts Commission, also the support that we received this year from our Parks and Recreation Department, as well as community partners, including the Downtown Issaquah Association and the Fleming School of Music. And finally, extra thank you to, of course, Issaquah Sister Cities Commission and all of the support that we see from our liaison staff. Thank you very much. And the biggest thank you happens to be for our Issaquah youth, for your bravery to participate when you saw that little poster from your teachers, or you heard a word from an adult mentor that encouraged you to participate. We want to recognize your bravery and also your courage to share your talent of artistic expression. So, we'll start calling you up. First, Alan, please come on up. Sure, let's do one at a time. So, Alan was our top student for original music composition. Thank you so much, Alan. Come on up, Mika, who is our top recipient for her artistic expression in photography.
Absolutely, we'd love to.
of Issaquah. We really mean that. Quickly, I just want to say that at issaquawha.gov/sistercities, we now have a digital showcase that features our two students that we have this evening, as well as two other of our top winners in two different categories, digital art and classical art, as well as features two other years of our student participants. So, if you'd like to take a look back at our history, please feel free. Also, we'd like to say all the best and good luck for your submissions to the international competition, which we will find out how that turns out this August. Thank you again, thank you for this.
Always fun when one of our special business items has to do with youth and their accomplishments in the community. That's pretty exciting. And I left my script over here. The last item of Special Business for this evening is ID 1742, What Works Cities Silver Certification, and I'd like to invite Dale Markey Crimp to the lectern.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dale Markey Crimp, Assistant to the City Administrator and proud Chair of our city's data-driven decision-making team. On June 17, 2024, the city of Issaquah was awarded the What Works Cities Silver Certification by Bloomberg Philanthropies for its use of data in our ongoing work here at the city. The What Works Cities certification continues to set a standard for the excellence in the use of data in local governance and government. This standard reflects the practices, policies, and infrastructure within municipalities that they must have in place in order to harness the almost infinite information that we have at our fingertips and use that for better decision-making. As Mayor Polly often says, "Values informed, data..." "Values driven, data informed." I got you. Issaquah is now among 83 cities in the Americas, and as I've been reminded to say, worldwide, because it's a worldwide certification, to achieve the certification. And we are the first city under 50,000, but also the first city under 75,000 in population to obtain the certification. With resources becoming increasingly scarce and our community asking for, very rightfully, more information about the way we do business and the impact of our investments, this process really required our organization to seriously consider everything that we could use to make the decisions that we make on a day-in, day-out basis. I highly recommend, if you have a chance, that you take a moment to read over the profile of the city of Issaquah on the Bloomberg Philanthropies What Works Cities site, which highlights the incredible data-driven work of our human services team, the incredible work of our police department, the incredible work of our art commission and art fund, and the incredible work that's hidden somewhere in between the lines of the various departments and divisions that are continuing to build their skills in gathering, analyzing, and communicating with data at the forefront. It has been a real joy. I think the first time I was up here talking about performance measures in the late summer of 2021, it was, I will admit, I was a bit nervous. It was a little bit, people were not always super excited to share data with me. I would go to them and say, hey, I hear you've got these performance measures. Could you share the data with me? And I can say, three years later, that the culture within our organization has absolutely evolved to be one that leads with data. I now get emails, honestly, on a weekly basis of, hey, I got this new data. I just got, I think the mayor and I both got one about the performance right now of our farmer's market this past week, and just to see the way that we're not just sharing data when it's asked for, but actually designing our programs with data collection and analysis in mind. It is truly, we are doing business in a different way. We are providing services in a different way, and that is incredibly exciting. So, this certification is just the beginning. It is step one for us in the right direction, and I'm very grateful for the leadership of our mayor, our city administrator, and of this council in prioritizing data and how we do what we do. Thank you.
Dale, that's great. We're going to do a big group picture with the award, so come on down. I think that was the plan, right, Wally? Bring us all down? Okay. data collection, data analysis, data informing that our council is making great choices for our community. So, thank you, you've been a great addition, and we're happy that we evolved. Thank you very much. That was a great step. So, the next item is Audience Comments, but I will remind the audience today that if there are no items on the agenda that you wish to make a comment on, you are perfectly okay to leave whenever you want. Do not, we're probably going on for another couple hours, so it's up to you. Nobody has to leave, but if you'd like to leave, go ahead. I'm going to read some general directions about Audience Comments. Members of the public may address council at this time, both in person or virtually, and those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on a phone, you can do this by pressing star 3. If you join by computer or smartphone, you can look for the hand icon. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before I close this portion of the meeting. And Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
No.
Okay, so, we will not be having anybody providing comments to council this evening, so just as a reminder. Oh, sorry, forgot to ask. Okay, Connie. Yes, we have someone in the room who would like to speak. So, I'm just going to add a few more comments, and then we'll call Connie up to the microphone. You're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your microphone if you are a virtual attendee, or please come up to the lectern that's in the center of the room. State your name and address and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously, and we thank you for taking your time to address us. I saw Connie's hand up, I didn't, oh, we have two. Okay, Connie, do you want to come up first?
Hi, I'm Connie Marsh, Levon Squawk, and I'm talking about the pre-application meeting that we worked years to get pre-application meetings required so that the community could actually get input before a ton of money was spent on a complete application. And so, I went to, wrote many letters, went to PPC, and frankly, was thinking I didn't have to go to every single meeting to track something like this when PPC had made a recommendation. So, I was surprised to read the agenda, to see that the subcommittee had changed the recommendation of PPC to continue to require the pre-application meetings for critical areas and larger projects. And then, it was going to go on the consent agenda, even though it was changing the recommendation from PPC. So, the, there are about, what, eight different ways that you could remove some of the risk for going beyond your time. There's been no public process on which pathway to choose, and when PPC heard it, there was no guidance yet from the Department of Commerce to decide. And so, they said, well, let's just delay it until we know more, and that seemed like a wise decision, because pre-application meetings actually don't start the time clock. It's only when you get a complete application that that time clock starts where you could be fined. And the last I saw, then you would be adding that meeting after the time clock started, which seemed awkward. So, one, I would ask for the bill to be brought down for conversation amongst the whole council and off of consent, and two, I would ask that it just be delayed until we have more guidance, and three, that when the decision is made, what language you want to include to try to alleviate the risk of having to pay fines, that is a public process. That is not just a process that is basically done in a subcommittee meeting and put on a consent agenda, which is, that's what it turned out to be, because the PPC recommendation was overturned. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have another person indicating they would like to speak today. Come on up. Oh, I'm going to get you to press that button in the center so it goes red. There you go.
That makes sense. Okay, hello, my name is Tina Hayes. I live in downtown Issaquah on Bush Street, and I just wanted to deliver a thanks from myself to the council and the mayor for the recent updates to our crosswalk on Bush and Second. We are thrilled. I have a thank you card for y'all, signed by just a few of the kids in our neighborhood. It's been a joy to use this crosswalk, and we haven't even started the school season. So, we're just really, really grateful for the efforts that went in by the council members, and I know it's a huge, huge effort, obviously, by the city and lots of personnel that went into that work, but we're very excited to feel safer as we use that crosswalk, so thank you very much.
Tina, thank you for your time to come in and express your gratitude, and anything that you have brought can go to our city clerk, and we'll all get to see it. Great, thanks. Thanks very much. Since I missed the first couple, is there anybody else in the room who would like to provide counsel with some comment this evening? So, seeing no other hands, we had a couple of speakers tonight. The first, talking about the pre-application process as part of our land use review, and desire to pull that item down from consent today. The second was just gratitude for some crosswalks. The second was just gratitude for some crosswalk improvements, so thank you, council. That was great. So just a reminder that written comments can be submitted at any time to the city council at citycouncil@issquahwa.gov. Now we're going to move into some items of business, and the first item on the consent calendar is mayor's remarks. I don't have any remarks this evening on the consent calendar, but I will look to committee chairs or chair designees who would like to report on any of our consent items tonight. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. On consent this evening, there is an item, it is item H, AB 8874. This is an item that was reviewed by the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee. We reviewed this on July 9, and we made several recommendations that I wanted to review with council. One is that we really appreciated the discussion of the Planning Policy Commission on a number of items, and largely did approve the recommendations from that committee, as well as the recommendations of staff. One of the changes was that we, we, one of the changes was regarding these pre-application meetings. The committee appreciated the PPC discussion, but we also wanted to flag the financial risk to the city if we did not make the change at this time to comply with the provisions within state bill of 5290, which would exempt the city from committing up to 20% refunds if you were not able to meet the required timeline for a project. So there was quite a bit of discussion in the meeting about this. It's actually flagged in our agenda bill as one of the few items that has a financial impact. With the, with the wording in the agenda bill, we are potentially able to avoid 20% application fee refund scenarios, and so this is ultimately something that we, as the committee, felt was an important thing. We, we recognize that our planning, planning staff are really working hard on making sure that we are able to comply with the timelines and making a lot of process improvements, and we recently saw a presentation on that. But at the same time, we also wanted to recognize that it is a challenge, and we didn't want to be in the position where we were not being the best possible stewards of the funds in this case. And so that, that's where we ultimately landed on this one. One other change that we made was that the PPC recommended screening for mechanical, requiring screening, which would be aesthetic, an aesthetic measure to block being able to see heat pumps. And ultimately, we, as the committee, felt that heat pumps are an important climate action technology that we want to encourage our community to be able to adopt, and that was the main reason that there were changes in Title 18 in the first place regarding heat pumps, was to make it possible to have heat pumps for different buildings. And so we wanted to facilitate that rather than add an additional requirement that was aesthetic and that would also add to the cost, recognizing that there is a cost of folks when they're installing these, this climate technology. So those were two things that I wanted to flag for council in the discussions. Also, there's, also, there were several things that were added into a Phase Two discussion, so they will be looked at within Title 18, but at a later date. And one of those is regarding the tree canopy coverage requirements. So that will be in a Phase Two. It will go to Planning Policy Commission, as well as the Environmental Committee, and I did want to flag that, because I know that community members have also a lot of interest in how we actually implement this new tree canopy coverage requirement. That concludes my, my summary of the committee's discussion on this item.
Thank you, councilmember Hunt. Did I see any other microphones go up for other comments? Okay. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Not seeing any indication. Anybody care to make a motion? Council president.
I move to approve the consent calendar as distributed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Council president.
Thank you. I would just like to add to councilmember Hunt's report that one of the conversations we had about the pre-application meetings, in addition to the financial aspect, was this does not remove the ability for pre-application meetings to go on. Developers have found particularly on large projects that this is very useful for them, and so they absolutely can do that. This just means that rather than requiring it as a pre-application meeting, they are allowed to do it after application. The meeting is still absolutely required. So I wanted to note that also on the screening for any of the mechanical items. That's still something that an HOA can do. We just didn't feel like it was appropriate at the city level to add cost to a permit. So those were some of the additional changes.
And under council president, if you can share too, I'm not sure many people know how something gets on consent or regular business, but the committee decided to put it on consent.
Yes, and that was something that comes up anytime something goes through committee. We try to make the decision as a group where it belongs. Oftentimes, we put something onto regular business if it's a larger item, or if it has a large financial impact, and otherwise, we try to keep something on consent if it doesn't have a big change.
Thank you, council president. The motion is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Of those opposed? That passes unanimously, seven to no. So we are going to move into the regular business portion of our meeting, and the first two items of regular business will be presented together, AB 8815 and AB 8845. This is the WashDOT, Washington State Department of Transportation Fish Passage Project Agreements and WashDOT Fish Passage Project City Liaison Contracts. Say that quickly. So we're going to have those presented together, and I received Director Moon is up at the podium.
All right, good evening. I am joined by a few people, and I'll be calling Matt up shortly to give the bulk of this presentation. But I wanted to just kick it off and also introduce the folks that have been working really hard with us as we try to advance this big multi-year project in our community. And so Matt Ellis is our Utilities Engineering Manager. He's here tonight. Melissa Ambler from WashDOT is also here, and then Chris Brown, who is from Partite, and will act as our owner's rep, our project manager, hopefully after tonight's contract is approved, to help us steward this project. This is an incredibly important and impactful project in our community. Councilmembers know, we have been hearing about this for many years. It's a federal injunction in place that is the catalyst for this, and city staff and Mr. Brown will continue to be working on this project for the next five, six years. And our role so far in the city has been to collaborate with WashDOT on their request for qualifications and subsequent RFP, to make sure that the city's needs and expectations are reflected in those documents, and ultimately in the design builder selection and the agreement that WashDOT will have with the design builder, whom we here refer to as the DB on occasion tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt.
Good evening. Matt Ellis, Utility Engineering Manager. Yeah, as Emily mentioned, we are here to bring two items to council tonight. We are here to talk about, specifically review and seek approval on the agreements. There we go. Oh, boy. We're here to review and seek approval of the agreements between WashDOT and the city relating to the Fish Passage Project, and approve the contract to utilize Partite as the city's representative and liaison in support of the project. So a recommendation, administration's recommendation is to enter it into the GCB and the UTB contracts of the WashDOT to enable city reimbursement, define roles and responsibilities. Also, to enter into contract with Partite is the city's representative to monitor and advocate for city interests and direct preparation of a future 2024 budget amendment. Ceded administration recommends allowing a contract for five years to match the duration of WashDOT's project. This extends beyond the city's standard purchasing policy of a three-year contract. Tonight, we'll talk about, we'll show the project locations, discuss the WashDOT Fish Barrier Project scopes of work, outline the relationships between parties, provide an overview of the agreements, provide contract estimates, lay out the city out-of-pocket expenses, explain the city's role and Partite's roles, identify next steps, and provide an opportunity for any questions. Quickly, here are the project locations. This slide shows all the barriers or culverts that will be, or were planned to be removed. Due to funding constraints, which I will elaborate on a future slide, two locations have been removed. And that includes the unnamed tributary to Tibbetts at exit 15 and SR 900 on Tibbetts, located just south of the city limits. So the first location is at Lewis Creek. Lewis Creek, and that is anticipated to last for about two to three years through design and construction. The preliminary proposal is to construct four bridges and install a new roundabout on Newport Way. Two of the bridges will be on city streets, Newport Way and West Lake Smamish Parkway. Some of the anticipated impacts include detours, temporary local street closures, and utility impacts, including relocating city water lines on Newport Way and West Lake Smamish Parkway. These water lines are WashDOT's responsibility to relocate as the project site at their expense. And then Cascade Water Alliance, the Bellevue-Issaquah Pipeline, or the BIP, and that will be Cascade's responsibility to relocate, and that's on Newport. And then revisions to the jurisdiction. The proposed roundabout on Newport is anticipated to extend WashDOT Limited Access Right-of-Way along Newport Way to accommodate the roundabout and revised exit 13 eastbound on ramp location. And here quickly is a map showing all the impacts. And again, these are proposed. The design builder will finalize the design and then construct the project. So things are being carried forward to about a 30% level through a separate designer. Once the design builder's on, they can make certain changes to the proposal, as is shown right here. This is the second location, which is the West Village Park and Schneider Creeks. Again, the anticipated duration is two to three years through design and construction, and this won't be back-to-back with Lewis Creek. There might be some mixing of design and construction. So once the design builder is on board, it will provide a more defined schedule. The preliminary proposal is to construct three bridges and a new stream alignment for West Village Park Creek between Newport Way and I-90. One bridge will be on city street Northwest Smamish Road. WashDOT will make the bridge forward compatible with the city's future Northwest Smamish Road Non-Motorized Improvement Project, TR 28. The project will provide a wide enough bridge for the future cross-section that includes a multi-use trail at this location. The extent of the forward compatibility is limited to the bridge, and road widening will neck down to current conditions once out of the limits of the WashDOT project area. Some of the anticipated impacts include detours, temporary local street closures, and utility impacts. The city sewer, the city is cost responsible to relocate the city sewer line, which fears off Newport Way and into the limited access right-of-way currently, and we will be moving that back to Newport Way. The city's water line is, will be relocated by WashDOT on Northwest Smamish Road. This water line is WashDOT's responsibility to relocate at the project site at their expense. And then the new stream alignment through Smamish Cove Park. There will also be coordination with city projects, including TR 28 Northwest Smamish Road Non-Motorized Improvement Project, and TR 22 Newport Way SR 900 to 54th. Both projects are planning to occur within the timeframe of the WashDOT's project, so there's going to be quite a bit of coordination with city-based projects. There'll also be some utility upgrades in the vicinity. And here is a map showing the location of that anticipated project. So again, a few sections were removed from the scope of work. That's Trib 0170 at exit 15 and SR 900 Tibbetts Creek, which is the south of the city. Those were removed from the package in June. The crossings were removed from the design build package due to funding issues. WashDOT is still required, under the injunction, to remove these fish barriers, but will do so under a different project. WashDOT will continue to design, now utilizing in-house resources, and seek additional funding for construction. WashDOT plans to award this contract at a separate date as a construction-only contract. There's no date outlined yet for when WashDOT plans to bid and construct this portion of the work, and we currently don't know if there will be any overlap with the work at Lewis Creek and West Village Park. But here is a schematic of the relationships between parties. This slide attempts to show the contract relationships between WashDOT and their design builder, WashDOT and the city, and the city and Partite, and Partite and the design builder. WashDOT will have a contract for the design builder to complete the fish barrier work. Design builder will be responsible for completing the final design and constructing all improvements outlined in the scope. WashDOT has two agreements with the city. The GCB is a general agreement that specifies terms and conditions for city review of materials, traffic control requirements on city streets, and cost responsibility for city reimbursement. UTB is the utility agreement for utilities that are owned and operated by the city that will be impacted by the project. Then the city's contract with Partite identifies a project manager, principal, a liaison that will attend meetings with the design builder and WashDOT, facilitate and coordinate submittal reviews, provide communication support to the public and council, and provide extensive expertise where needed, including traffic management, signal modeling, flood evaluation, hydraulics and hydrology, and environmental impacts. Neither the city or Partite will have a contract for the design builder, but Partite will be the conduit for communication with the design builder to ensure information gets to the correct channels, to ensure both parties live up to the requirements outlined in the various contracts. So the GCB, this is the, again, the general agreement for coordination and review of nonutilities work that impacts Issaquah for the term of the project. As briefly described before, the contract provides expectations and agreed-upon requirements regarding review, comment, coordination, inspection, and communication tasks. Outlines project elements such as the RFP, scopes, schedules, traffic plans, right-of-way permits, design of city infrastructure, and construction support. And then it identifies the city will have a 14-day turnaround for review of any submittal that the design builder submits to the city. Describes the roles, the role of the city and its representative, Partite. WashDOT has agreed to pay the city for city staff time, as well as support needed to facilitate this project. This includes utilization of Partite as a liaison and representative to support city review and impacts, including traffic, impact, environmental impacts, and hydraulics, et cetera. UTB is an agreement for coordination and review of utilities work that impacts Issaquah for the term of the project, and this includes the water lines at Lewis Creek, West Village Park Creek, Schneider Creek, that WashDOT is cost responsible for relocating, and as well as the sewer line that the city will relocate at the city's expense. And also any water and sewer line impacts proposed by the roundabout at Lewis Creek on Newport Way. UTB also identifies allowable water shut-off times for city mains. This agreement outlines the review, comment, coordination, and communication tasks. Outlines project elements such as the RFP, utility design review, and construction coordination, and describes the role of the city and its representative. Similar to the GCP, WashDOT has agreed to pay for the city's staff time, as well as support needed to facilitate this project. This includes utilization of Partite as a liaison and representative for all elements. City's role. Some of the tasks that the city is required to support for this project include review of submittals for city streets, review traffic control and detour routes, project coordination with the city and private developer projects that may impact or may be impacted by the WashDOT Fish Barrier Project, community outreach support, review utility relocation work. WashDOT fish barrier project, community outreach support, review utility relocation work, review compatibility with future projects, and coordination on turnback of city facilities. So, we selected Partite. As the city and WashDOT began negotiations on this project, it became apparent that the city needed external support to meet the requirements of this agreement. Attending project meetings and facilitating project review submittals is anticipated to be, at times, a full-time job for periods of this project that extend through 2028 or 2029. Additionally, expertise beyond the city's resources may be needed at times. Administration elected to hire, through competitive RFP process, Partite to fill this role. Their responsibilities include the following: attending project meetings, lead city review, provide communication to the public, council, or other entities as needed, project coordination with various city and private developer projects, assist with traffic planning, including signal timing, review, and detour routes, environmental evaluation support, including flood evaluation, habitat enhancement, and stream hydraulics, and utility coordination. So the cost estimate. The GCB, the cost estimate was created when the project was originally estimated to be four crossings, including the Exit 15 unnamed tributaries and the Tibbetts SR 900 crossings. The estimate is ballpark figures, estimated to provide a basis of anticipated time to support this project through its completion. The estimates are not to exceed amounts, and will be reimbursed for actual expenses incurred. For the GCB, the estimate includes estimated city staff time, time and materials, and consultant support and indirect costs, and the total for that is 3.65 million, and the anticipated portion associated with the Partite contract is 2.2 million over those five years. In the UTB, the reimbursement for actual expenses incurred, its reimbursement for actual expenses incurred, the estimate includes city staff time as well as consultant support. The total is 2.02 million, and the Partite contract is 1.6 of that. Work on, so there is some city out-of-pocket expenses. Work on SW 017, the Newport Sewer Relocation Sewer Project, to move that sewer line out of WashDOT right-of-way is anticipated to be $350,000 in 2024 for the design and construction next year at 3.6 million. Regarding schedule, WashDOT will be, the proposals for the design builder are due this month in July. In September, they will award the contract to the design builder. In October, they will provide a notice to proceed, and by December 2029, they have substantial completion. There's a big gap there, and they will, the design builder, once they are onboard, will provide a more thorough schedule of what they will actually plan to do and at what times. So the next steps is to, upon award of the design-build contract, begin working with the design builder and WashDOT, elaborate with WashDOT and public information, and negotiate agreement with WashDOT for coordination of tributary 0170 Exit 15 and SR 900 Tibbetts design and construction. We foresee that we will need Partite's continued support relating to traffic control, flooding, and environmental concerns, and project coordination on that element of the project. So, our recommendation is to enter into the GCB and UTB contracts with WashDOT to enable city reimbursement and define roles and responsibilities, and enter into the contract with Partite as city representative to monitor and advocate for city interests, direct preparation of future 2024 budget amendment. Questions?
Matt, thank you for the presentation. Very succinct, very clear, and in no way shows how much work you and Director Moon have put into making sure that this was coming tonight before council. Questions for council members? Let's remember her.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Very complicated topic and very well presented. I had two questions. One is the roundabout, is that something that, the bridges are clearly important for the fish passage, but is the roundabout something that was on WashDOT's list, or is that somehow also required because of the fish passage project?
So, the current Exit 15 eastbound on-ramp, big word, is situated on top of the current culvert. So they needed to move the on-ramp to provide space for the bridge. So they decided to move it further east, I'm sorry, yeah, further east, and that coincided with the driveway to some apartments. And so the preliminary design, again, this is to the 30% level, showed that a roundabout would facilitate traffic a little bit better and provide access to the freeway in a better way. So, again, the design builder might come up with a different solution. That's something we don't know yet, but the preliminary design shows that that would be the best.
Okay, so it is all, it is all directly related to the need for the fish passage bridge?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you. My second question is, there are two related agenda bills presented together. One of them has that there is $160,000 in a future 2024 budget amendment for anticipated 2024 reimbursable costs, but then there's also the amount of 3.791 million, and it looks like that in the other bill, the 160 isn't in the reimbursable part there, and so I just wondered if that is, if that is reimbursable, if it has to be reflected in that other number in the second agenda bill?
It is part of that total amount, so that's the amount that we anticipate from when we started negotiating with Partite. They've been supporting us through this GCB-UTB contract negotiations with WashDOT. There's been expenses incurred to date, and then through the final, the end of 2024, there will be additional expenses, but we didn't account for that in any of our budgeting. So, that is what the $160,000, $160,000 represents is the costs through 2024, but that would be fully reimbursable, and that's part of that total amount.
Okay, so that doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be reflected in the table on
Correct.
the reimbursements page?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Council President De Michele, and then Councilmember Hall.
So this might be a question for WashDOT, and if you can't answer it, that's okay, but on the two projects that have been delayed or put on hold, are they still anticipating that they're going to meet the deadline? And if so, are we facing a lot more construction going on once those projects come back online?
I might have to call on my WashDOT resource, Lois Amel.
Okay, so your first question, are the two that we took out going to be completed at some time? And the answer is yes. When that will be, we're not sure. So, we are waiting till the 2025 Ledge session is over, and hopefully, we'll get some more funding, and then our fish delivery team will come up with a strategy with the additional funds and figure out which projects we're going to go forward with. So, when it does happen, there will be a lot of construction, but the coordination with Matt and Emily and the city is not going to stop. So, we're going to know what projects you're doing, and you're going to know what projects we're doing, and so we'll try to inconvenience the public as little as possible.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Hall.
Thanks, and thanks, I had the roundabout question as well, so thanks for asking that. Can you speak again to the future proofing of Northwest Mammoth Road, what the limitations might be for having it be forward compatible with our multimodal improvement?
Yeah, so they have to put a, they have to remove the fish barrier for Schneider Creek, which is at Northwest Mammoth Road, and to do that, they're planning to put in a bridge. We didn't want them to put a bridge that only meets the current width of the roadway, because we're proposing to put a project that widens that, and we wouldn't want to remove a bridge that was just recently constructed. So, they are committed to constructing a bridge that would meet the footprint of the proposed cross-section. That's why earlier this year, or it was, it was last year, where we agreed upon the cross-section, we needed to get that to WashDOT so they could start putting that plan together. But they won't extend the widening of Northwest Mammoth Road further than that bridge, so it'll, it'll just taper down to its current alignment.
Okay, so if I'm understanding right, then the bridge will be constructed into the right-of-way to where we would expect the road to be?
Correct.
It doesn't limit any, anything in the future? We feel confident?
Yeah, correct. We've provided them with our preliminary design, and they've designed their bridge to facilitate that, and so there might be some work on top of the bridge to make sure that we go from how we're going to construct that roadway to, what's currently here to what we're proposing for that roadway. Like, we're looking at different ways to bring in the roadway, cross slope, where I think we're doing, actually, going to not have a crown, but have a full slope, and so there's all kinds of things we're going to change around the roadway. So, there's going to be some work, but it'll be the correct width for the future project.
Councilmember Ray. Oh, Councilmember Hall.
I had one more. Thank you, that's good to know. So the estimated staff time expenses seem very sizable, and so it's got me thinking about just our bandwidth as a department, so I'm wondering if you could talk about kind of what impact that might have while that's going on, especially during kind of peak times? If we're going to be needing to scale back investments, or be thinking about that as a council, or maybe just talk generally about kind of impacts on it?
That's again why we're hiring Partite, to offset that load. There will be some impacts to city staff, that's why we have that in there, and that's for a five-year duration, that's why it shows a sizable amount. Also, that was anticipated for four crossings, we're down to two, so the anticipated staff impact will be less than what we originally anticipated. But there will be some impacts, because although Partite will be providing that initial review, some staff will need to review certain aspects of things that the design builder brings to us. So there will be some impacts, but I don't think we'll be scaling down, we'll be utilizing our consultant resources to help support us during these crunch times.
Councilmember Ray.
Thanks. I have two questions, and they're both really related to the impact on the Newport and South Lake Mammoth neighborhoods. But what are we doing as this really extensive amount of work is going on, and there's only one way really out, in and out there, to minimize the impact on these neighborhoods?
That's a good question. WashDOT will be leading, WashDOT and their design builder will be leading the traffic control proposal for that. We have let communities know through neighborhood meetings and outreach that these projects are coming, but again, before, until the design builder is hired, we won't really know what the traffic control or detour routes are going to be. So, again, we will, we will help support WashDOT and their design builder through that communication process, but they are going to have to take the lead and really trying to figure out a way to make sure that traffic isn't bottlenecked on our streets.
And then my second question, which you teed up beautifully, thank you, is what's our recourse in the event we have some issues with the design builder? I mean, not that I don't trust everybody and think everyone's going to do a spectacular job, but I just have seen issues arise. So what, where do we go? What's our recourse?
It's a good question. I think the contracts that we have with WashDOT does provide that recourse. We do have some assurances about how things will be constructed to make sure that our, you know, if we do have a large amount of volume on our roadways, they will review, they will inspect the roads after the work is done to make sure they haven't deteriorated too much. During the project, I think it's just, it's those contracts with WashDOT to make sure that things are, again, we don't have a contract with the design builder, it's with WashDOT, and WashDOT is the project manager for that work, so that's where that recourse is.
Okay, great, thanks, Matt.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Matt, appreciate the presentation of a pretty complicated subject. Could you pull up the map for the second project, West Village Park in Schneider Creek? In your presentation, it says there'll be three bridges and a new stream alignment there, but I was wondering, along Newport Way, there appears to be a box that is another bridge, and I'm just wondering, is that a fourth bridge, or is that still the three that we're talking about? Could you clarify that, please?
Good question. So, back when this slide was developed, there was going to be an additional bridge on Newport Way. However, there were some utility conflicts that prevented that extension to occur on Newport, so WashDOT is stopping their project at the right-of-way, WashDOT Limited Access Right-of-Way, which is right there on Newport, so that project will not extend over Newport.
So is that a second project that we'll have to pick up later, or are we just not doing that at all?
It would be the city's responsibility if we wanted to do it at a future date.
Okay, and so, I agree with Councilmember Ray's concern about our communities, and we are going to be stopping up Newport Way for quite a few years, and then perhaps doing another bridge at that location later, and then causing another logging or bottleneck of Newport Way. Just a little concerned that, you know, putting another project there right after getting done with the fish passage project could cause some consternation for the neighbors there, so I'll just throw out there, if there's any way to coordinate it so that that project can occur during that same phase when we're working on Newport Way, for Project One, that'd be fantastic. If it doesn't work out, that's just a concern that I have.
Yes, understand that, Councilmember Joe. This is something that we looked at for many, many months, a lot of negotiation, there are other parties that are involved with this location, and it was decided that this was not the time, nor was it the budget, to accommodate how that culvert needed to be improved. As you know, the city has future projects on Newport Way, there will be future construction, it is quite possible this culvert will be part of that. It's too early to say, but we will continue to try to mitigate the impact to Newport Way, but unfortunately, as you know, there are a lot of projects on a long stretch of road.
Thank you, Director Moon. I would appreciate any coordination that we can do to put those projects together in a package so that we reduce the impact to Newport Way any way that we can. So, I'm very pleased that the administration and the Public Works Department has given some thought to that. Thank you.
A lot of thought for that, a lot of thought. I'm looking for additional council member questions. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the years of work. It's been a long time. It's also been exciting to see the kind of creativity that you are putting into how we can do, pull all these pieces together, like Councilmember Joe said, this is hard on the neighborhoods, and you've really, really, really have been thoughtful in your work and in WashDOT's approach to your work. Very much appreciate that. Okay, if there are no more questions, would someone care to make a motion? Council President?
Thank you, and just to clarify, there's both of the motions at the same time? Yes?
The council can choose to offer them together or handle them separately.
Fantastic. I would move to authorize the mayor to enter into two contracts with the Washington State Department of Transportation, GCB 3834, and UTB 1565, for reimbursement of eligible expenses pertaining to the city's review and coordination of the fish passage projects at I-90 Lewis Creek and I-90 West Village Park and Schneider Creeks in substantially the same form as the attached agreements, as approved by the city attorney. And I move to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Partite Incorporated in the amount of $3,791,040 to support the city with WashDOT's fish passage projects in substantially the same form as the attached agreement, as approved by the city attorney, and authorize the inclusion of $160,000 and authorize the inclusion of $160,000 in a future 2024 budget amendment for anticipated 2024 reimbursable costs.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Not seeing any. No, you can. You can. Councilmember Ray?
No, I think this is, I think this is great. This is obviously something we need to do. The issue raised by Councilmember Joe and myself is this has a huge impact on our neighborhoods and everything we can do to minimize the impact and make sure that we have some vehicle for ensuring that the design builder, their activities are as minimally disruptive as humanly possible would be very important. And I know that Public Works has worked diligently and looked at this. I'm just reiterating and putting a big exclamation point on it. It's gonna be an impact on those neighborhoods for a prolonged period of time.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Any additional comments from council? So thanks for making me read the whole thing again, Councilmember Ray. That has been moved and seconded, has been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to enter into two contracts with the Washington State Department of Transportation, GCB 3834 and UTB 1565, for reimbursement of eligible expenses pertaining to the city's review and coordination of the Fish Passage projects at I-90 Lewis Creek and I-90 West Village Park and Schneider Creeks in substantially the same form as the attached agreements as approved by the city attorney, and to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Partite Incorporated in the amount of $3,791,040 to support the city with WashDOT's Fish Passage projects in substantially the same form as the attached agreement as approved by the city attorney, and authorize the inclusion of $160,000 in future 2024 budget amendment for anticipated 2024 reimbursable costs. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries unanimously, 7-0. And so again, I just want to thank you team and thank our partners with WashDOT from the I-90 Improvement Project, which is helping us with our West Lake Simamish Trail, from the work you're doing on State Route 18, from the culvert projects. Huge investment in our community, but construction is hard, so challenging. But thank you so much for coming and being available for questions, and thank you, Public Works. Great job. Wonderful. So the next two items of regular business will also be presented jointly, and it's AB 8837 and AB 8856. The first is the PFAS Agreed Order Partnership Inter-local Agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue, and the PFAS Agreed Order Consultant Contract Authorization, and we'll keep Director Moon up at the podium.
Another big topic for you this evening, and that's our PFAS-related agreements. This is part one. We will be back with more, just as we will be with WashDOT-related agreements. Tonight, we have Eric Buer, who's our Farallon Project Manager here in the audience with us. And I don't see Chief Lane at the moment, but I know he's here in spirit. Both Eastside Fire and Rescue and the city have been working together hand-in-hand on this issue for many years, as you all know. So tonight, our purpose is to give you just a brief overview of the agreed orders. We will be back hopefully in September to give you a more robust overview of those agreements. We are still drafting those, negotiating those with Ecology. We're anticipating there will be two of those. Tonight, I'm also seeking your approval for the interlocal agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue. We've had others in the past. I'd like to revise the scope and enter into a new agreement that correlates with the work that we have ahead of us. And then lastly, seeking approval of a contract with Farallon, and we are requesting a waiver of the competitive bidding process, and I'll get into the rationale for that in a moment. So our recommendation is to enter into these agreements as I've described, and the last agenda bill dealing with Farallon also requests some additional funds in an amended 2024 budget, as we did not have that in our base budget. I'm gonna review a tiny bit of history on this big topic in our community. I'm gonna go over the project locations. We're gonna talk about what it means to be a potentially liable person, and our role, Ecology's role, in the work that's ahead. The agreements that we are anticipating entering into AO will stand for Agreed Orders. IAA stands for Inter-Agency Agreement, and ILA is an Inter-Local Agreement. We'll go over Scope's work quickly, a big macro schedule for this work, talk a little bit about budget and funding and next steps. So A-TRIPPLE-F is a chemical firefighting foam. It's historically been used to fight certain types of fires, not all fires, and the city and Eastside Fire and Rescue used this foam both to extinguish fires but also in their training, lawful training activities that occurred on these sites. So A-TRIPPLE-F is a source, not the only source. There are many sources of PFAS, unfortunately. And in Issaquah, A-TRIPPLE-F was used at the Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters, Issaquah Valley Elementary School, Dodd Fields, Memorial Field, and Rainier Trail in certain locations. Those were our historic fire training grounds. The city did confirm PFAS in one of its wells in 2015, and we have been dealing with this issue ever since. The city and EFER have been on the national forefront, actively trying to respond to PFAS, and this has included testing our water, installing a filtration system to remove PFAS, and purchasing more regional water to replace much of our groundwater supply. City has met all safe drinking water standards since that time, and we will continue to do so. I have great faith in that. So as we move forward as a potentially liable person, a PLP, that formal label will give us increased access to resources, we hope, in order to help us with this next stage of our cleanup efforts. However, I want to state that the city will continue to advocate that chemical manufacturers take responsibility for A-TRIPPLE-F and PFAS, and that they have significant responsibilities to us and many other communities. So the cleanup actions have not yet been determined. We're gonna use a lot of terms, but the bottom line is we are still in largely the investigative scope, trying to characterize our situation and help identify some possibilities for final cleanup. So what's described tonight includes initial work and initial funding, but not the whole project, as we will see over the course of several years. So these locations I mentioned briefly earlier, Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters on the west side, along with Issaquah Valley Elementary School and Dodd Fields, that is what we refer to as a west-side site. And then on the east side, it's Memorial Field and a location on Rainier Trail. So parties to the agreements that are before you this evening and will be coming forward soon include Ecology, which is the lead agency. They have the responsibility to administer funding that has been set aside for this work. They're setting the schedule and the timelines to complete different actions, and they are the ones that construct and then implement the community outreach. The city's responsibility is as a PLP on the east side and the west side, along with EFER. We're jointly PLPs on the west side, and we're responsible for completing the Agreed Order Scope within a certain timeline set by Ecology. EFER similarly is the PLP for the west side, along with us, the city, and it will be the lead agency for those west-side sites, and they also will be responsible for completing the work of the timeline.
Director Moon? Councilmember Marz?
So if there, if the Issaquah Valley Elementary is a site, why is the Issaquah School District not a party to these agreements?
It's an excellent question. I think Ecology's response thus far has been that the city was the entity, the city and EFER were the entities that utilized the A-TRIPPLE-F, and that we need to take primary responsibility. We are continuing to work with the Issaquah School District on access issues, on communication. They will continue to play a role, but the city had entered into that PLP agreement some time ago and took responsibility.
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilmember Marz. Usually, the cleanup agencies define a site by the limits of the contamination, and the PLPs are usually the people who have contributed, potentially contributed to contamination. So property owners usually play a cooperative role in allowing access. Good question.
So I just want to make sure I understand right. The Issaquah Valley Elementary is not, we don't think that was a site that contributed these chemicals.
Correct.
It's just that they have been identified there. Thank you. Okay.
So this graphic just shows how the pieces are connected. So we will have the agreed orders coming before you, hopefully in September. That defines those responsibilities. Then the Inter-Agency Agreement with Ecology, the IAA, that will describe what's reimbursable, what's the scope of work that the city needs to collaborate with Ecology on. And then we have the Inter-Local Agreement with EFER, which really speaks to the cost-sharing and the cooperation between the two entities. And then lastly, Farallon's contract describes the work under the IAA that needs to be accomplished and gives them the green light to go forward with that work. Wanted to also just define some terms, a lot of terminology used by Ecology. Interim Action Work Plan describes the work that is first interim, before we actually develop a final cleanup plan. So that's a way for us to pilot, explore cleanup technologies, try to make headway, then do some analysis and see how effective that cleanup has been, or just take partial steps toward cleanup before Ecology finalizes the draft cleanup action plan. Then the Remedial Investigation Work Plan describes all the work that should be accomplished during that investigation characterization phase. The remedial investigation and feasibility study is the report out after that work has been completed, and it begins to define what is the recommendation for the actual cleanup plan. And then we arrive at the draft cleanup plan. We've identified all those pieces that will require by the Department of Ecology some opportunities for public comment. We just completed the first round of public comment, which looked at the public participation plan. We had public comment on the public participation plan, and we had public comment on the agreed In the Inter-Agency Agreement, again, draft, not before you tonight, hopefully will be in September, but I want to give a quick overview because this is the scope of work that we're asking Farallon to conduct on behalf of the city. And so on the east side, Memorial Field and Rainier Trail, it will be to develop that remedial investigation work plan, complete the investigation. We expect that that will involve installing more monitoring wells, collecting sediment and water samples in the creek, doing more borings and soil sampling, and some groundwater monitoring, perhaps. And then Farallon will be asked, and the city, under that IAA, to prepare that feasibility study and to also help collaborate, engage in the public participation plan. And at the end, we hope to arrive with that R-I-N-F-S report. The west side is similar, except for the fact that the west side is a little further along in some activities. There's better characterization right now of the problem on the west side, and there have been some investigative work that has already commenced. There's SEPA as well that is likely to be required because of construction work that will occur on that site. But otherwise, it looks fairly similar. In particular, it looks very similar on the Issaquah Valley Elementary site. Schedule hasn't been fully set yet. Again, that's part of what we're negotiating with Ecology, but we do hope to be underway immediately after those agreed orders are finalized and the Inter-Agency Agreements have been adopted by Eastside Fire and Rescue and the city of Issaquah. We anticipate that we would be able to complete the scope if we get underway right-of-way in 2027 for both the west side and the east side. To date, the city and Eastside Fire and Rescue have secured in the state budget $3.5 million for this scope of work. However, it's not enough to cover the costs that have been identified yet in the draft Agreed Orders and IAAs. The west side, which is EFER Headquarters and the elementary school, you can see is close to $5 million, and there's close to $2 million that is not covered under those available funds. We've allocated, per our understanding and agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue, costs for the east side sites as well, because we want to get both sites underway and moving. That scope of work is estimated to be about $600,000, and there are some amounts that are not yet fully funded by those state resources. So our future work will be to advance the work of the agreed orders. We know that there will be additional work required for the permanent cleanup actions on both of the sites. The current funds, as I've described, really only partially cover that investigative phase, and future funds will be needed for all of the cleanup actions. So the city and Eastside Fire and Rescue, as shown in the Inter-Local Agreement, will continue to advocate for those resources in multiple ways. And the city will have to seek both grant funding, we believe, continue to advocate on the national level for those chemical manufacturers to help us with these costs. Just touching on briefly the Inter-Local Agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue, main components of this agreement are that we will continue to collaborate with each other on the lower Issaquah Valley PFAS project and implement the agreed orders. That we'll share the responsibilities for the west side, where we both are named as PLPs, and that the city will have the responsibility for the east side for the PLP notice from Ecology. The agreement also speaks to the $3.5 million worth of state funds already secured and how those would be put toward the two sites, and that we will continue to advocate and seek other funds. So after we developed this slide, it became abundantly clear, we will not be ready for August 5th. So it will be after August 5th that we'll be back before you, seeking authorization, enter into those agreed orders, and also the Inter-Agency Agreements with Ecology. We're anticipating that Eastside Fire and Rescue will take action on at least the same agreements as are before you tonight on their September 12th meeting. Whether or not they'll be ready yet to discuss the agreed orders and the Inter-Agency Agreements at that time, we still don't know, because we're still in negotiations with Ecology. But it looks like September will be another PFAS. But it looks like September will be another PFAS conversation, both here at City Council and at East Side Fire and Rescue. So tonight, the recommendation from city administration is to enter into the I L A with East Side Fire and Rescue and to approve a resolution waiving the competitive bidding requirements to authorize entering into a contract with Fairlawn to complete the work related to the agreed orders and authorize a future 2024 budget amendment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Moon. Nice to see you, Eric. So this is very complicated, as the director explained, and you're in phase one right now with a couple of agreements in front of you. But before we go to questions, I just want to let you know nobody else is doing this, that you are way out in front, which is an advantage and a disadvantage to be the first person to negotiate agreed orders. But the relationship between East Side Fire and Rescue and the city and ecology isn't being replicated anywhere else. It's really quite commendable what you are doing as a team. So thank you very much. Questions on the presentation? Councilmember Ray, followed by Councilmember Hunt.
Great presentation on the PFAS stuff. Nothing about Fairlawn and why we want to do that. So can you give us a little bit of background on why we want to waive the competitive bidding requirements?
Yes, thank you. I meant to speak to that, so I'm glad for the prompt. The recommendation to enter into the contract with Fairlawn and waive the competitive bidding comes from a couple of places. One is that we have had a very longstanding relationship with Fairlawn and Fairlawn has been with us most recently at the table with ecology, negotiating these agreed orders and various implementing agreements. And so their understanding of all of those ins and outs of negotiation is advantageous to us as we move forward. Fairlawn has also served as East Side Fire and Rescue's primary consultant on these issues throughout all the actions that they have taken over the last several years. So as we enter into an agreement with East Side Fire and Rescue, we think it serves the public interest best to utilize the same consultants so that we can share data and resources and discussions with ecology, all as one group. That will make for some efficiencies, we hope, both on the cost side and just on the workload side.
Great.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. That was my question as well, so thank you for the explanation. And then one other question. One of the sites is an elementary school. It's got kids there and I think there's, you know, there's concern. So I wanted to ask about, do we expect any at all impacts, you know, from having had these firefighting foam on the surface, as I understand it, at the elementary school? Or, you know, is the cleanup really just to make sure it isn't going into the aquifer and into the water source?
Yeah, as we sit right now, the primary purpose for the future scope of work is to reduce the potential for any of those compounds to get into our drinking water. So that's the primary purpose. The state has standards for soil cleanup. They will continue to, as they do on water, they will continue to evaluate if those standards need to be adjusted in any way. Right now, the primary purpose of this agreement is to try to mitigate, prevent any more of this contamination to get into drinking water.
Additional questions? Councilmember Hall?
Quick clarifying one. Can you go back to the scope of work slides for the East Side site and the West Side site? So the end, the outcome for the scope of work there is to have a remedial investigation and feasibility report. And then, so then on the previous slide, the key documents, I'm just not seeing that. Where does that fall within the agreed orders? Is that the third bullet?
Third bullet, correct.
Additional council questions?
Hey, I'm looking for a motion. Council President? And again, the two motions. I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the interlocal agreement with East Side Fire and Rescue for the PFAS agreed orders partnership in substantially the same form as the attached agreement as approved by the city attorney and approve resolution number?
2024-18.
Waiving state competitive bidding requirements for continued PFAS investigation and remediation work based on special market conditions and sole source of supply and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Fairlawn Consulting in the amount of $588,300 and authorize the inclusion of $95,000 for work under this contract in a future 2024 budget amendment.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. One of the components of this work will be making sure that we're coordinating with ecology on communicating to our residents about the work and what it entails. And I wanted to flag that previously ecology had sent out a flyer to the community, which I know, I heard a lot of people express concern about. And so, you know, PFAS is, we're learning more about it, but it's also, there are so many sources of it. It's a forever chemical. The more people are looking for it, the more they are finding it. It's not only in firefighting foam, it's in many, many, many things in our modern lives and it's making its way into the soil and into the water in many different ways, unfortunately. So I think that, I just wanted to make sure that we are coordinating with ecology and with these other agencies and how we're communicating about it and, you know, why we are taking these steps to do the cleanup and that our drinking water is safe, which is the bottom line, which I think a lot of people had that concern based on the way that some of this has been messaged in the past, not by our staff, but by other agencies.
Emily, can you touch on that for a little bit? Because you have some input on their messaging, but it's rather limited.
Yes, I think that's an accurate way to put it. And ecology is also working with Department of Health. So Department of Health has their messaging. Ecology will defer to them on some issues as well. So I think there are multiple agencies that are trying to make sure we're presenting as much information as we know at this time. And as you said, council member, we continue to evolve in our understanding. But the city will be augmenting that information, making sure our story is there so the public understands what actions the city has been taking as well.
Yeah, thank you. And it is a component of this work to coordinate on communication. And so I just wanted to especially flag that, you know, in that example of communication, it wasn't the fine print that our drinking water is safe. And I just want to make sure that the context for our community is that our, you know, we have done this testing. We have taken these measures to make sure that our drinking water is safe. And that's what ultimately most people are wanting to know. So I just wanted to make that clear and also make sure that as we are undertaking this work, and there will probably be more communication to the community, as there should be, that we are, that we are making sure that our particular context is very clear.
But council member, you've hit on a very interesting point nationally, which is that only the drinking water standards at this point in time have been approved, that the material is still being produced nationally. It's still being put in products. It's in many, many products. And so the full regulatory landscape hasn't been developed, which makes this super complicated. The other piece of this is the cleanup regulatory landscape has also not been worked out. So Public Works has been really trying to get our local voice in there because we know the people the best, because we hear from them the most and we know what their broader range of concerns are. So thank you for highlighting that. That's super important. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I would just like to thank the mayor and the administration. I know that the mayor took a real interest in this and initiative in taking this on. One of the reasons that the mayor decided to be our representative for East Side Fire and Rescue was this PFAS issue. And she's traveled across the country to try to get information about it and try to find the best way forward. So just want to say thank you to the administration, to the mayor for all your hard work. Thank you.
Very kind. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Motion was moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the interlocal agreement with East Side Fire and Rescue for the PFAS agreed orders partnership in substantially the same form as the attached agreement as approved by the city attorney and to approve resolution number 2024-18 waiving state competitive bidding requirements for continued PFAS investigation and remediation work based on special market conditions and sole source of supply and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Fairlawn Consulting in the amount of $588,300 and authorize the inclusion of $95,000 for work under this contract and in a future 2024 budget amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, seven and oh. Looking at the time, I'm wondering, does council need a short break before we do our last item or just plow ahead? I'm hearing plow. Okay. So thank you very much for coming, Eric. Thank you, Public Works. That was a great presentation. We'll move on to A B 8879, solid waste contract administrative fee. And our sustainability manager, Stacy Van McInstry, is coming up to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Good evening, members of the council. I am Stacy Van McInstry. I'm the city's sustainability manager and joined tonight by Evan Brumfield, our environmental and regulatory program manager, and Sam Tarvin, our solid waste analyst. We're jointly presenting to you tonight as the staff that both manage the sustainability fund as well as the staff that manage the waste hauler contract. Tonight, we're here to discuss with you the proposed increase to the solid waste contract administrative fee. This fee provides revenue to the city's sustainability fund, which supports implementation of the Isaguay Climate Action Plan as well as our waste diversion programming and projects. During the next two slides, we're going to provide background information on the sustainability fund. As mentioned, the fund supports climate action and solid waste programming. Revenue from the administrative fee on the solid waste contract supports this fund. We currently have a 6% administrative fee, which went into effect with the new waste hauler contract about a year ago. The fee was previously set at 9%, but was lowered in 2023 with the new contract in order to offset increased fees from the ecology rates. Currently, the revenue generated from the fee brings in approximately $660,000 per year. This number is approximate as it depends on the number of residential and commercial customers and the size of their accounts. Back in 2021, the city adopted its first climate action plan. For the first year of I C A P implementation, we relied on a small allocation of funds, funds requested through council and grant. We were able to accelerate implementation of actions in 2023 using sustainability fund and additional grant funding. In addition to actions associated with climate mitigation and resilience, the I C A P includes a number of solid waste actions in order to support our waste diversion. Because of capacity, work on solid waste was really limited in the last year and a half. In the summer of 2023, we were certified by the leadership in energy and environmental design, or LEED, as gold. Through this process, we identified a number of limitations in our solid waste work, which really highlighted the need to bring back a focused staff to work on waste diversion. We hired the solid waste analysts just this past spring. In conversations with the environmental board, with council and the community, we know that both climate action and solid waste programming and projects are a high priority. We have plans that identify roadmaps for implementation to make progress towards our targets. Based on our draft budget for the 25-26 biennium, we cannot currently support the work that staff have identified as needed over the next biennium to continue progress towards our targets based on that anticipated revenue in the sustainability fund. We are pursuing all possible grants, but as you know, this takes a lot of staff resources to apply for grants, manage them, and report on them. We will continue to pursue all possible grants to supplement our budget, but the additional dedicated revenue to the sustainability fund will help support our essential climate and waste work. In order to support this climate and waste projects and programming, we're proposing increasing the fee back to 9%. We presented this recommendation to the M and I committee on July 9th. The committee supported the proposal and, but did ask for clear communication to the public on how we would be spending the revenue and also to make sure that we offer options to our residents to reduce their ecology bill and at the same time reduce their waste generation, for example, moving to smaller bins. The committee asked that we reevaluate the fee next year to see if we are generating enough revenue for our climate and solid waste programming. At the July 10th environmental board meeting, the majority of the board also expressed support for the 9% fee and also expressed support for clear communication to the public on how they are benefiting from the current and proposed I C A P and solid waste initiatives. This slide is showing a summary of the tables that are also presented in the meeting packet. We show our proposed 25-26 budget, 1.8 million in '25 and 1.46 in 2026. We do have some carryover to spend down, which is shown on row two. And we show the forecasted revenue of $990,000 at that 9% administrative fee rate in row three. Row four shows what the fund balance would be, anticipated to be at the end of 2025 and end of 2026, given our proposed budget and the proposed 9% administrative fee. We can currently meet our proposed projects and program cost needs at that 9% rate. So next, I'm going to speak a bit to what we would be able to achieve with that additional funding and then we'll pass it on to Evan to speak to the solid waste programming. A fee increase supports a variety of climate and solid waste projects and programming. Without the fee increase, we can maintain our ongoing costs, but any additional project and programming will need to come from grants, which will limit the implementation period. I'll highlight some of the proposed climate action work that will be covered with this revenue. Earlier in July, council heard about our progress on actions and targets for the climate action plan. We identified the need to accelerate our work and in some cases, expand projects and programming. Our proposed budget does this. Some of the major budget requests are capital projects, such as solar energy for several city facilities, electric vehicle charging for our fleet and the public, completing conversion of our streetlights to LEDs. Many of these capital projects will ultimately save the city money in the long run, allowing us to further invest resources in our community programming. We are also planning to continue, as well as expand, some of our residential electrification programs. This includes our heat pump program and other electrification incentives. These programs put money back into the pocket of our residents. We are also looking to continue programs for existing commercial and nonprofit buildings for energy efficiency, electrification, and renewable energy. This is a free service that supports our community's climate targets while also supporting our smaller businesses and nonprofits and meeting state mandates that they may not be able to afford on their own. We will also continue to expand and expand our community resilience programs in partnership with our emergency manager, which is an essential service to the community during climate emergencies. There are many other smaller projects and programs that the sustainability fund will support. Just highlighting tonight a few of those larger projects. One item I'll also add that's not captured on the screen is the important to recognize that city investment that really helps leverage grant funding. For example, our investment in the heat pump program has helped to leverage grants at a one to five ratio and we expect that to continue as long as the state and federal sources remain in place. As we prepare our budget, we are also working to identify the climate benefits, such as emissions reduction and energy savings through implementation of those projects. Now hand it over to Evan to speak to solid waste programming projects. I can also pause here if there's any questions specific to- I can also pause here if there's any questions specific to the climate actions.
Any questions from the council on the climate actions? I'm not seeing any. Stacy, welcome, Evan.
All right. Hello. Thanks, Stacy. As council saw earlier in July and as well as at the MNI Committee meeting, our diversion rates have been heading in the wrong direction. So, with the hiring of Sam Tarvin as our full-time staff resource for solid waste, we now have dedicated staff to develop and implement waste reduction programs and pursue grants and implement these grants as well to support our ICAP and LEED certification goals. So, the increase of the admin fee back to 9% will allow the city to implement a wide range of solid waste programs, including implementing these grants and the city match required for them across multiple sectors. So, we plan to standardize solid waste resources across all city facilities, including consistent containers and signage and developing policy that pushes the city towards zero waste through sustainable events and other programs. But this will allow anyone that steps foot into a city facility to know what container is what. So, right now, you know, we have this gray container over here in the room. I've never seen that in any other building in the room. So, that it's garbage, that's great, but you go into the bathroom and the gray bin in the bathroom is for composting paper towels. So, that's very confusing, right? So, we're trying to standardize that across the city to make it easy to achieve our goals. We'll also develop a comprehensive public information campaign on waste diversion, including partnering with ecology on Food Waste Prevention Week. This will allow greater visibility and transparency into city waste diversion programming and provide tools and resources to community members to understand how they can make everyday changes to help with diversion and potentially lower their bills doing so. We also plan to potentially expand our city's construction and demolition waste programming, or CND, ordinance. This will help us track diversion from large construction project sites. And we also plan to expand and set up more opportunities for community reuse and repair. This will allow, or sorry, this will encourage community members to participate in city-level repair and reuse economy through repair events and tool and resource libraries. We anticipate that the last two, the CND and community reuse and repair, would be a good candidate to work with UW Evan School, Graduate School, to kind of analyze to see how we can best roll these out in the city. We also heard from council that there's interest in policy to require recycling and composting at multifamily facilities. In the future, this is something that we can evaluate and determine if this is appropriate with the current budget, using our staff and consultant support. However, we are also planning a multifamily diversion program and contamination program to help us tackle this diversion issues at these large multifamily sites. These programs directly align and support ICAP and LEED certification goals and will allow the city to achieve its waste diversion objective. So, our options. We're recommending an increase back to 9%. This will cost the average resident or most subscribed service level, which is a 32-gallon rolling cart. This will be an increase of $1.14 a month for a total of $13.68 a year annual increase over our 6% admin fee. This would result in $330,000 in increased annual revenue over our current 6% admin fee. The 9% admin fee will be higher than some of our surrounding jurisdictions, but also lower, and so it kind of puts us in a nice happy medium. So, kind of the total rate, right now, this is approximate with kind of where all the draft rates are. We're anticipating a King County fixed annual rate charge increase next year of 2.83% is what they're proposing right now. So, that mixed with cost of living, which right now is right around 3%, mixed with our 9% admin fee, we're looking at a $3 increase over our existing 2024 rates. This will allow for larger, more impactful projects to meet our ICAP and LEED certification goals, though. The second option is more of a baby step approach. So, we're taking a percent and a half increase next year in 2025, go to seven and a half percent, and then additional percent and a half increase to get to 9% in 2026. This would result in a 57-cent monthly increase in 2025 or an annual increase of $6.84. And again, that's for that most subscribed 32-gallon service level. This phased approach would offset the King County fee increase going into effect in 2025 while also generating $165,000 in additional revenue over our current 6% admin fee. However, carryover revenue going into 2026 would be less than the recommended option. Staff would need to reduce our current proposed projects, particularly for residential electrification, commercial energy efficiency, EV charging and renewable energy on our city facilities, and our larger solid waste projects. So, the approximate kind of rate, again, we're taking that King County fixed rate. We have our 3% cost of living and then that seven and a half percent admin fee. We're looking at an increase of about $2.40 over our existing 2024 rates. Then the last option is the do-nothing option. Status quo, stay at 6%. At this level, staff would need to reduce their ongoing costs significantly as current revenue does not support ongoing costs after 2025. Our approximate total rate for this with that King County fixed rate, cost of living, and maintaining our 6% would be an increase of $1.80 approximately over our 2024 rate. So, we're really talking about a $1.20 a month increase between our recommended 9% and our do-nothing 6%. This would significantly reduce or eliminate many current ongoing programming and new projects for ICAP implementation, and staff would need to allocate more capacity to pursuing So, our recommendation is increasing the administrative fee from 6% back to 9%, which is where it was in the old contract, to support implementation of the Isaguac Climate Action Plan and waste diversion programming and projects. So, timing the next steps. Following council's decision, staff will alert recology, if appropriate, of any change in this fee, and it will take place January 1st. Staff will then work with recology to make sure that we communicate with the public on how this revenue is spent and options for reducing waste bills, well, reducing waste and bills. Administration will also review the fee in the second quarter of 2025 and determine if additional adjustments are needed. That is one thing that we heard at the MNI Committee as well as the Environmental Board is, is this enough? And so, we want to reevaluate kind of where we're at, and maybe we need to look at a potential further increase in subsequent years. So, the recommended motion before you tonight is increase the contract fee for the Comprehensive Garbage Recyclables and Compostables Collection Services contract with recology King County Incorporated from 6% to 9% to support implementation of Isaguac's Climate Action Plan and waste diversion programming and projects effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you, Evan. Are we on to questions?
Yes, questions?
No, thank you both. Councilmember Martz.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry. Do I need to let the chair report out first, or do you want to report out after the questions?
I'll do that after the motion.
Thank you very much. Sorry, Councilmember Martz.
Thank you. So, on the ICAP, one of the elements is electric vehicle charging for fleet and public. When I go look at charging locations that have like at least 50 kilowatts, which is not a particularly aggressive number, and I say they're rated like a five or better out of a 10-point scale, we have one in the city. Are we doing anything to try to promote that? Because what I keep hearing is that the number-one impediment to commercial, to end-user use of electric vehicles is adequate charging away from them.
Yeah, great question. Right now, the current projects we're looking at are mostly Level 2, just because, Level 2 charging because of cost provision, but we are looking at grant opportunities to increase the fast chargers or the 50-kilowatt. There's a couple of private installations that are happening around the city, and we're hoping to encourage more of those as well so that there's less investment and management of those projects using city funds. But that's something we are looking at for grant funding as well.
And remind me, Level 2 is like four to nine kilowatts?
Yeah, yep. That's going to be your four-hours charge. We have one at the community center, but yes, we are looking at grant opportunities for the DC fast chargers because they are very expensive for installation.
Yeah, I just, I think Level 2 is great if maybe you have an electric vehicle and you, for whatever reason, can't have a charger in your home, but if we're, if we're looking for folks who are coming through town and would love to have them stop by one of our fine restaurants or some of our nice businesses while their vehicle is charging, it's not going to be sufficient for that. So, I'm eager to see, as a city, we have, you know, it seems a shame that we have not in the last few years. We've had, we've had one good charging improvement in that higher range, but it's been very, very slow, given how many electric vehicles we have in town.
Absolutely, yeah. So far, we've been unsuccessful in the grants we've pursued. We're going to continue to pursue them. We have some of those sites identified, so we're hoping if we are, continue to be unsuccessful with grants, if we have private interests, that they will approach us and we can inform them of where we think those installations are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
More comments or questions? Before I go to Chair Ray, Chair of the MNI. Oh, sorry, let's go to Councilmember Hunt.
I do have a question. It was mentioned that recology increased their rate fairly recently and substantially was noticed by the community. We are making, you know, a dollar or so for, a dollar or so per month for the most commonly subscribed garbage and size this evening, but it does add on to that higher amount. And additionally, there has been a lot of concern, including by myself, about the service from recology and so with the increased rates and then also, you know, missed pickups and that. So, I was wondering how it's going with the contract management that some of this is also going to fund. I think it was mentioned that the person who is doing the contract management would also be able to do more outreach with the community and more of the waste diversion, which was always the stated goal. So, I'm just wondering how it's going with, with recology and, you know, what percentage of time you think might be able to start going towards these, working with the community on the waste diversion?
Yeah, it's so great to meet you all. I'm very happy to be here. We've been spending a good amount of time working on the contract management with recology, setting up a lot of guide rails, setting up expectations, knowing that there, we're driving a lot more accountability with them. We're seeing a lot of improvements. They just came in and presented on their, and for the rest of the year service plan and looking at summer and what goals we're, we're holding them to and what metrics we're holding them to, and they have a lot of really good long-term strategies in place. Since the cyber attack, we've seen a lot of improvement, especially around missed pickups. We're consistently seeing improvement and having ongoing conversations with them and being really boots-on-the-ground with them, monitoring hotlist sites where we've consistently seen frequent pickups. That being said, I'm obviously not here to fully manage the recology contract, and we're trying to pivot more to outreach, and so we're really starting to push those conversations and see where we can leverage some of the previous or the premium services that we get with them, specifically the Waste Zero Specialist and all of her experience on the ground, doing community outreach, talking with businesses, talking with multifamilies to really push diversion. And so, that's something that we're going to start pivoting to, probably within the next month, and really focusing on what's happening, how do we drive diversion, how do we have these conversations with the communities, what barriers still exist that we need to address to get people to recycle more, to compost more. So, that's definitely the focus moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Chair.
Thanks. I'd like to move to increase the contract fee for the Comprehensive Garbage Recyclables and Compostables Collection Services contract with recology King County, Inc., from 6% to 9% to support implementation of the Isaguac Climate Action Plan and Waste Diversion Programs and Projects effective January 1, 2025. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a council discussion, and would you like to start us off, Chair?
I would love to. We had a, when this came to the mobility infrastructure, we had quite a robust conversation about it, and I think it's really important to realize that we did have a 9% fee until the last contract where we reduced it to minimize the rate increase. And ultimately, the Isaguac Climate Action Plan is at the heart of this fee increase. There is a fair amount of uncertainty about the ongoing availability of state grant funding, which is something we have leveraged a lot, moved the ICAP forward. For me, the thing that was really most significant was the solid waste diversion program has to be turned around, and I think that the diversion can be the focus and also can be the offset for the additional cost by reducing the cost of trash hauling. Additionally, focus on commercial and multifamily residences is another area where we can really focus these additional funds to drive diversion and really move the ICAP forward. Stacy did a great job of highlighting the ICAP plan and some of our desired outcomes, but the one that I found most interesting was a focus on city facilities, which are, where we can reduce the cost or the impact on the environment and also reduce the operating cost of these facilities. So, there's a double benefit there. The committee wanted to have this agenda bill on regular business since this is a fee increase, and that's important that we bring that to light, but also to highlight the need for the funds for ICAP. And though this will increase the cost of trash hauling services, I think it can be offset for the majority of people through diversion, as long as we can get the word out about what you can do with diversion. So, I think this is the right thing to do on many, many different dimensions.
Thank you, Chair. Any other comments on the motion? Council President and then Councilmember Hall.
I have to say, before I really dug into this and saw the individual impact being so small, I was kind of against it because our, our residents have dealt with so many increases and particularly to their trash and waste expenses. And so, I thought, gosh, we can't add another cost on to that. And it's really hard to also create a fund for a particular area. It makes it much more difficult to manage budgets overall and be flexible in all of these areas. But when I go down into it and see how small of an impact this is to the individual, when I recognize how we are able to utilize it for grant match funding and to implement many of the actions of the ICAP, which we wouldn't be able to do without this, I ended up coming around to supporting it. So, I want to say thank you for the committee for having a robust conversation and providing the information that also particularly the three different options on there really allowed me to kind of look into it and contemplate, okay, if we go one direction, that's the impact. If we go another direction, that's the impact. So, it was really useful in contemplating this, particularly when we're talking about increasing costs for our residents. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, sure, and Chair Ray did a great job summarizing what we talked about at committee as well, same with staff, of course. You know, I won't repeat kind of what's been said. I totally agree that, you know, we've heard from the community that rates are high, but we've also heard a commitment to focus on climate action here. Also, in the strategic plan that is being updated right now, they're advocating for more pace and climate action as well. And then, of course, you've mentioned our LEED Gold certification and how waste was an identified area for improvement. I did just want to say one thing, though, which is that another way of thinking about this is through kind of the context of our upcoming budget discussion. I think we all recognize it's going to be a challenge. There are going to be a lot of challenging discussions around what we can fund, and this is a lever that we can pull that's available to us for some modest gains but pretty high impact, pretty significant amount of things that we can afford with a small increase to continue our leadership in the space of climate action, make progress on important community priorities in even when times are tough. So, agree again, just want to reiterate again that being able to communicate effectively with the community about what exactly they're getting and the opportunities to, you know, in the future with these, with these investments, that they'll actually be saving money in the long run is a very powerful and compelling argument. But again, I think the recommendation move forward with going back to 9% is compelling, and I'm going to support that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Deputy Council President De Michele.
Yes, and I'll be really brief because Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Ray really, really summarized it very nicely. Had a great conversation today with former City Councilmember John Rittenhouse, who's a dedicated environmentalist. And we were discussing the fact that climate change is not going to go away. It's not going to be solved next year or the year after or the year after that. And so even though this is a little bit of pain, a little bit of sacrifice, the payoff in the long run is really what we're looking for and it's really important that we start to make that. And our, our community has told us over and over and over again that they support and want to see climate action plans implemented. So I support this. I also want to emphasize the comments that were made about tackling the diversion rate among multifamily housing. That is something, again, I would welcome you to come back to us with something related to that and see if we can't encourage that more, because that would be a huge increase in our diversion rate if we could begin to get multifamily occupants to begin to participate in that program. So, great presentation. Again, thank you, Steph. And, and I do think we had a great conversation at the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. So, so I support this as well. Thanks.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Thank you for all of those. It has been moved and seconded to increase the contract fee for the Comprehensive Garbage, Recyclables and Compostables Collection Services Contract with Recology King County, Inc., from six percent to nine percent to support implementation of the Isaguac Climate Action Plan and Waste Diversion Programming and Projects effective January 1st, 2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, that carries unanimously, seven to no. Thanks very much. We're going to move on to committee and regional reports and we'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next Cascade Water Alliance Board meeting is July 24th at 3:30 PM. And the next Public Affairs Committee meeting for Cascade is August 7th, 2024. I'll take a minute just to talk about LTAC. We met last Thursday and it was a budget discussion to figure out the direction going forward. And the conversation is still ongoing, but right now, we are probably going to recommend removing the small community grants that we had for the last couple of years. They were put in place after COVID to help some of our nonprofit organizations continue their programming or initiate new ideas during that, that dark period. And so what we'd like to do is take that $50,000 that had been used for small projects and the committee, the LTAC committee is talking about focusing some of that money on a project where we could focus our vision for the LTAC funds with the nonprofits. And the nonprofits would apply for the grants with that goal or event in mind so that we are taking the funds and taking the expertise from the nonprofits that we have to focus on one particular event, perhaps in the fourth quarter of next year. There'll be more information coming, but I just wanted you to be aware that that's kind of a change in the LTAC recommendation that's going to be coming your way. And so it's just going to be a little bit, it will be a little bit different. And so just wanted to make you aware of that. That concludes my report, though.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. I have two Eastside reports, Eastside Fire and Rescue and Eastside Transportation Partnership. So the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met earlier this month on July 11th. We officially approved a contract for services with King County Fire District 45, or DUBAL. Earlier today, I shared out the presentation that the chief gave, which kind of describes how this changes our service area and also how our service area has changed over time since 2011 quite a lot. And then also how the organizational structure of EFER is changing to reflect some of these new contract partners that we have coming on. And again, just to make sure you're aware, our contract partners, they set a level of service. They fund it themselves, so it's at no additional cost to the partners, to regional partners like us, like Isaguac. But speaking of costs, the Finance and Administration Committee is meeting this Wednesday. This is the next step of going through EFER's biennial budget process. And we're all, I think we're all very eager to get a more clearer sense of what the operating, equipment replacement and capital facilities maintenance costs, actually increases are going to look like. In that meeting, I do just want to level set with everyone that I'm not going to be coming back likely and saying no partner contribution increases like I have in previous years. This might be a tough one as well. Councilmember Martz and Council President Walsh and I, well, I guess actually it'll just be me at the Finance Administration Committee. But Andrea, Deputy City Administrator Snyder and I will continue to push for cost savings where we can, but do just want to let everyone know that it's going to be a tough, tough one. We are taking August off, so the next meeting of the full board won't be until Thursday, September 12th. The Eastside Transportation Partnership also met earlier this month on July 12th. We received two interesting presentations. The first was on Bellevue's bellhop presentation. And it's very exciting to see how successful their program has been so far and how supportive the community has been of doing that. And the second one was from Metro on their full range of flexible services. So that's Vanpool and Vanshare, Metro Flex and I'm trying to do it from memory, and Community Van, that's right. How they're currently performing and kind of what the future of those programs are looking like. In terms of main takeaways, people are using these programs. Ridership is slowly increasing and Metro seems really exciting, really excited to be investing more in these kinds of flexible service programs. Councilmember, or Deputy Council President De Michele and I were eager to share that Isaguac a lot so much. These presentations were also shared out with you if you'd like to get into the weeds a bit more. And ETP is also taking August off, so our next meeting isn't scheduled until Friday, September 30th, or 13th. And that's
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two salmon-related reports and then Planning Development and Environment Committee report out. So the Riot Eight Salmon Recovery Council, Riot Eight being the name of our watershed, met on July 18th. And we had one decision item, which was to approve a letter supporting Lake Washington Basin Invasive Predatory Fish Control Program. So we did recommend approving that letter and sending that to the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. Predation is increasingly recognized as an important thing that we need to tackle and important for the salmon lifecycle. We also had a presentation about habitat restoration projects and actually a field trip to a Redmond Habitat Restoration Project, which was very interesting. And then the Kokoni Interlocal Agreement Management Committee, which meets to specifically consider how we are using funds for our Kokoni in Lake Smamish, which is a kind of salmon that spends its entire lifecycle in the lake. We met on July 15th and we considered different, well firstly, we heard back about the Kokoni returns. Last year, there were 279 fish that returned. The, the bad news is that that is far from a sustainable population. We're still in the low hundreds for a population that was not too recently in the, in the many thousands. When I started serving on council, the, the first returns that we had that year was 19 fish. That was in 2017, so, you know, one nine. So we are moving maybe in the right direction. There's also a lot of concern, rightfully so, amongst all of the agencies that are working on this because there's a lot of fluctuation as well and it's not really clear if it's, you know, how, how consistently we are fluctuating in an upward direction. The year before was 81 fish, so it's, it's fluctuating, but all of these numbers are really low and really alarming. So this group is looking at management actions for supplementing the population, making sure that we're continuing to have Kokoni, which is really important also for the Snoqualmie Tribe, which is involved in this agreement. And so we considered two budget options. I will say that the impact to Isaguac for either of these options is, is really small. One is $68,000 total and one is $73,000 for this interlocal agreement. The main difference is around how much effort is spent on outreach. And so I will say, from my perspective, I would like to make sure that we're doing as much as we can on the management and on the actions to make sure that we're supporting the population of the Kokoni and then potentially doing the, the sort of outreach to community. I think there's other opportunities for that. We've seen, you know, movies being made about Kokoni, for example, which have gotten a lot of traction, which is great. So the motion has been made to go with the option that focuses a little bit more on, on management and a little bit less on that outreach. And both motions are going to be voted on online and we will see. But I, I do support the motion that's focused more on the, the management side of things. That was the main topic that we discussed to make sure that we approved the budget in time for them to, the Kokoni Interlocal staff to, King County staff to work on this agreement. And there will be a Kokoni Work Group meeting on July 24th. We will report out on the results of the, the counts of Kokoni, but also on the results of this group's decision as far as which budget to go with. So that concludes that meeting. And then one more meeting. The Planning Development and Environment Committee of this council met on July 9th. We had three items, but one of them I already discussed, which was the Title 18 amendments, which was on consent. I can skip that one. The first item we discussed was COM 0019 Lakeside Transfer of Development Rights. This is an item that came about because in 2013, the city entered into a development agreement with Lakeside Industries, Inc. And part of that agreement concerns TDRs. It, it is a requirement from that agreement that the city identified TDRs when, when Lakeside requested that, as they did. So the city identified TDRs from a number of sites throughout the city, including Bernstein Park, Guano, Sybil, Madeline, Cora, and then Bergsma. Bergsma, there's been, of course, a lot of community interest in making sure that that is well maintained. And so we, as a committee, focused a lot on the conservation easements that came with this transfer of development rights. And one outcome from that discussion is that the committee did ask that staff bring back a matrix of the uses that were possible under the existing code and the existing agreements with and without this conservation easement, just to disentangle that. We also had legal staff there explaining, you know, that this was not in any way damaging to the conservation potential of, of this or any of the other properties, but we wanted to just see the uses and how this would impact the uses, future uses. So this will be brought back to council when that item returns. And then the one other item was COM 0067, which is Housing and Parking Analysis Scope of Work. This is something that council has discussed in many different capacities. And we, as a committee, the main, the main thing that we wanted to make sure was conveyed that we wanted to have big, bold recommendations come about from the parking study in terms of looking at, looking at cities across the country. What are the best practices for parking? How do we make sure that our parking standards and regulations are conducive to getting the kinds of housing and development that we, that we want and that the community needs? And so we were generally in agreement about the scope as it was presented, but wanted to make sure that when the results came back, that there were some, you know, innovative things for us to consider looking across all of the best practices across the country. Additionally, I did ask, so I specifically asked about including EV charging into the parking study to see if we can also do that with the existing funds or to make sure that we're incorporating that as an important component of parking. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Mobility and Infrastructure Committee met on July 9th and we had a single agenda item, which was the solid waste contract administrative fee that we just discussed, so I'm going to skip over that. The committee is not meeting in August at this time and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on July 10th at 7:00 PM. Amongst, there were no, no actions taken, no actions contemplated, but we discussed 2025 solid waste rates. We had a presentation on nuclear radiation health effects, which I can sum up, summarize as saying that turns out nuclear war is a bummer. We had further discussion on regional alignment on the Asaili crisis. SCA Summer Social is, as we discussed last time, this Wednesday, 5:30 to 8:00 here at the Pickering Barn. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend, but hopefully we will have great representation as the host city for this event. The Services Safety and Parks Committee will meet tomorrow night at 6:30 here in council chambers. We have two topics. The first is COM 0020, tantalizingly titled Enhancing Recreational Programs. And then also COM 0048, Urban Forest Management Plan Update, which is maybe not so tantalizing, but also important. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President De Michele?
Thank you. So Councilmember Hall reported on the Eastside Transportation Partnership. And the only thing I have to add to that is today, Metro announced that they're adding two Metro Flex routes in King County. So obviously, these are popular and ridership is up and they are expanding that program all over the place. So anyway, that was good news. On July 17th, the Regional Transit Committee met and we approved the Rapid Ride Prioritization List, which goes through 2050. In that prioritization list is a rapid ride route that would run from East Gate up along east of Lake Washington, up to the entire corridor to Bothell, and that would help Isaguac residents. However, it is many, many, many years in the future when it would be implemented. So RTC will not be meeting in August, like many other committees. On July 18th, Mayor Pauli, Councilmember Joe and myself attended Eastside Port Unplugged at Pickering Barn. And did I miss anybody who also attended? Okay. So we had, it was a lovely evening and kind of a social evening. Mayor Pauli introduced and welcomed the crowd and did a great job with that. And we heard reports on the port activities and progress, an overview of the airport's renovation and expansion projects, which are really quite amazing. And then a report on planning for the, I pronounce it FIFA, but it's Fife?
No, FIFA.
FIFA, World Cup, from Beth Knox, who's the Director of the Seattle Sports Commission and also an Isaguac resident. And the planning for that event is quite extensive and really quite interesting. The logistics are amazing. So it was a great evening at Pickering Barn. And Mayor Pauli wanted to make sure that we highlighted the fact that there's another invitation to a port activity on August 15th. It's called the Working Waterfront Tour and Reception, and it will be held aboard Argosy's Lady Mary. So you should have seen that today, come through today. So that's against my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President? Council President?
Ringing up, where was my email? There we go. Okay. Last Thursday, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board meeting, which was interestingly about tree canopy and housing. And they very particularly put in this concept of, we want both. We need to figure out the ways to do both, et cetera, et cetera. So we heard from the City of Tacoma, which has a really interesting program there, as well as the Tree Equity Collective. And just the conversation really went into those dual priorities and how they can live together. We did, as a Sound Cities Association group, kind of write back and say, hey, we love that you presented this, but we really need to get the best practices from everybody. Like, what types of trees should you be recommending use of, stand our adjusted climate? And things like that back to the city so that we can utilize that best practice information. So we asked for more there. Tomorrow, the King County Affordable Housing Committee will meet. The agenda includes comment letters for the comprehensive plans of Bellevue, Auburn, Bothell, Federal Way, Covington and Isaguac. So all of the cities have to, in this new So all of the cities have to, in this new method, present their housing element to the Affordable Housing Committee to review it against what the county had approved in their countywide planning policies. So basically saying, we certify that you are in agreement with the King County CPPs. And so nobody has passed with 100% flying colors. They've all given a sense of, hey, these are the things you've done really well, but here are some things that you really need to do to fully come into commitment. We had five recommendations from the affordable housing. They're really trying to get cities to prioritize 0 to 30% AMI. In our comprehensive plan, we had originally written it as 0 to 50% AMI, and so now we're going to take it back to PPC to do that type of review. That's one that no city has gotten through with flying colors on yet. Suggested that we need to complete the housing inventory and analysis, collaborate with populations most disproportionately impacted by housing cost burden, strengthen affordable home ownership implementation strategies. And then finally, one that I think we will all agree with, partner with Sound Transit to help ensure future light rail stations are in areas conducive to housing development, including income restricted housing. So I've heard back from our planning staff on all of these. They're like, hey, these are great. We just haven't quite gotten to them yet. And here's the plan for making sure that we make progress on each of those. But I wanted to let you know, this is an interesting project. It's been really useful to see the feedback that has come out from the Affordable Housing Committee. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I see Dan Landis is waiting. I wonder if council would agree that I could do the mayor's report and our other items after Dan's presentation since it's 9:30. So if that's okay, I'll move my report and we will go to the informational updates. ID 1730 is on Transit Oriented Development Opportunity Center update. And I'd like to invite management analyst Jillian Straub to introduce our next presenter. Dan, you can come up to the microphone as well. Dan is the Vice President of the Development with the King County Housing Authority. Welcome, Jillian.
Thank you, Mayor Polly and members of the city council. Tonight, Dan Landis, the Vice President of Development at King County Housing Authority, will provide an update on the development timeline on the Transit Oriented Development Project. KCHA and the city have partnered on this project since 2017. When KCHA came on as a development partner, they now serve as the development lead for the site. The project will include a mix of affordable and market rate housing and an opportunity center with health services owned by the city. I'll now share my screen and invite Dan to present.
Welcome, Dan.
Is that better? Sorry. It's great to be back here again to give an update on our Central Issaquah TOD project. Hopefully, I have something that will be a little bit more new and exciting for you all than what I've been reporting on. Despite how I've spent the last six years, negotiating with telecom companies is not what I really love about my job, but creating affordable housing is. And we've really started that process in earnest this year. And so I'm excited to share with you where we are and where we hope to be. Next slide. So I just want to give you all an update, give you a chance to answer any questions. I'm not sure I'll be able to answer all the questions that you have, but I'll at least be able to tell you how soon, I think we'll be able to have answers for most of your questions pretty soon. Next slide. So where we are with our project is not that different than where we've been in terms of what we hope to build. And that includes at least 155 units of affordable housing, a mix of 40% and 60% AMI units. In addition, at least 200 market rate units. And we are committed that at least a quarter of all units will be market rate, although I think it's going to end up being higher than that. We still have a 10,000 square foot opportunity center, which Jillian mentioned, will be built by KCHA and then transferred to the city. And the partners there are still onboard, Health Point and Valley Cities. We're also, will include some public improvements, most notably a mid-block crossing that divides the project into a north and south block. So there'll be two different buildings, the affordable building with the opportunity center to the north and the market rate building to the south. Will incorporate in that mid-block crossing the quarter acre public plaza that was originally envisioned by the city as well. Next. So I just want to update you on things, I can't remember what all we talked about the last time I'm here. I may be repeating myself some, but in any case, we did acquire the site at the end of 2023. An architect has been engaged and the design is underway. The architect that we selected is Weber Thompson, and so far, we're thrilled with the work they've been doing and the engagement they've had on this project. Vertical Bridge has not yet moved its tower. That has been something that has really been the ongoing concern. We had to acquire the site before Vertical Bridge had moved off and all of those issues were resolved. A number of issues have been resolved with Vertical Bridge in that they do have the site that the city stepped forward with adjacent to the park and ride lot across the street from our site. They also have received their permits from the city. They just haven't started yet. And we're hopeful that our next report from them will indicate that they have. I think they've been held up a little bit by getting all of the approvals in order that they need from the two carriers on the cell tower, but I'm not really sure. We have had a couple of preliminary design meetings with city staff that were very helpful, and I want to commend your staff for their willingness to help us achieve the vision of the Central Issaquah TOD project. We have full site investigations underway, and we have begun discussions with the city staff on the ownership structure for the opportunity center and specifically on how we can structure this so that the money that's been committed from the Department of Commerce for that project can be committed and spent in 2024. We will be meeting again in a week to hopefully reach a better sense. Since our last meeting, the city staff have talked with the staff at Commerce and have gotten more guidance on what's going to work. I think that our goals are aligned with the city's goals to make something work so that we can spend that money this year, but also to realize the dream that you have for the opportunity center at the project. Next one. So just to go over a couple of the changes that have happened since we've started this project, as I think we've reported before, but our original market rate partner is no longer involved in the project. The primary person we were working with left the entity that was the market rate partner and the other partners that own that entity were no longer interested in proceeding with this project. And we have not yet selected a new market rate partner, but that is something that we will do, and I'll explain when we'll be able to do that. The site boundaries have also changed. So when we originally started looking at the site and did our original designs, we were using a legal description associated with the deed, which also was the way that the site had been used by Century Link/Lumen over the years. But it was in conflict with a different legal description associated with a short plat that divided that whole block up years ago. To make a long story short, in order to be able to acquire this site, the site boundaries shifted. So they're now 30 feet to the west of what they were. So the 30 feet adjacent to the Sound Transit and Fire Station site have more development challenges than the 30 feet that were given up to the east. So that's something that's changed. There has been a new land use code, and we're sorting out how that might impact our development. And we are considering different orientations of the building. I think some of, what orientation we end up with will be driven by what the site constraints are. And we have looked at various options that have been put forward by our design team, and we hope after our next meeting with the city permitting staff, we will have enough information at hand that we'll be able to make a decision on which way we're going to move forward with that. So as I mentioned, we selected our architect this year in May. We expect their concept design and our selection of a design to move forward with will be done in September. We are currently out for a contractor, and they will be onboard to start with the schematic design process. The initial thing that we're going to have them do is a cost estimate of the concept design, isolating what the cost of the opportunity center will be so we can have a better sense of that. Again, October or so is when schematic design will be completed. We need to have, so we have not yet sought a market rate partner for a couple of reasons. One reason is it hasn't been a great market for market rate players, and we want to make sure that we hit the market at the right time. We have invested a significant amount of money in this site to date, and we want to be able to recover as much as we can from the partner that we choose for their land cost. Also, we have made commitments to the city, to the county, and to Arch about how many affordable units we would build, and we need to make sure that the portion of the site that we reserve for ourselves is adequate to accommodate those units that we've promised everybody and that we intend to build. I think that so far, the news has been pretty good in the design concepts we've seen from our architects, that we should be able to both hit our initial target as well as have enough land left over for 200 market rate units on the site. We may be able to exceed that as we see how the studies come in and the work with the city. So that's something we will know by the time the design concept is completed, a much better sense of how many units we're talking about. And as soon as we know that and provided that the market, that we get interest and that we get enough interest that we think we can recoup a fair price for what we've put into the site, we will go out and solicit proposals from market rate partners. I will say, there has been some calls that we've fielded recently from partners that are interested in joining with us, and it will certainly be easier to develop the site if we're working in tandem. And so we don't, ideally, we would like to have that partner onboard this year and not wait for beyond that. So hopefully, the outlook for these developers is good enough that they'll show us some good interest this year. We're planning on starting construction in spring of 2026 and completing by the end of 2027. So, and this is just a quick summary of what the timelines are. As I mentioned, in October, we'll have the cost estimates in place. We hope that the legal structure and how we're going to use the state money will all be figured out before then. So this will be the last thing to plug into our agreement with the city related to the opportunity center and that we have that finalized as quickly as we can after we get those cost estimates. In the spring, we'll be done with design development. We'll be going in for the entitlement applications. And as soon as we can after that, the building permit application. We have had really good communication with the city planning staff so far and hopeful that that will continue so that we get a sense about what their issues are and to the extent that we feel like we're proposing something that's consistent with the policies and what the city staff are wanting to see, we will then move forward with the building permit application so that we can get that in time for the construction season in 2026. We'll out for bid early in 2026 and by May have started construction there. So I think those are the, is there another slide, Jillian? So that's all the slides. So I am happy to answer any questions if any of you have them.
Dan, Jillian, thank you very much. Councilmember Mertz, followed by Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. So can you go back to the design and construction schedule, please? Can you bring that back up?
There. The one before that.
Yes. There we go. So that is a busy fall. That is a busy September, October through December. So our first major, maybe not first, but the most critical vote that ever came on this project happened seven years ago. So I know there's been a lot of issues, cell towers and deeds versus short plats and all that, but help me understand what's going to change that's going to go from the cadence that has taken us seven years to get to where we are today to a real flurry of activity over the next six months?
So our original desire was to have Vertical Bridge in the process of building their tower, their replacement tower, before we started spending a lot more money on the site. In discussions early this year with city staff about the state money, it became clear that we needed to get started before Vertical Bridge got working. Now, from now on, we're moving full steam ahead. There's not, I mean, we have the financing that we can have at this point. We have the pre-development financing to do what we need to do. We're prepared to entitle the whole site, and if we can find a market rate partner to continue on our development and continue looking for a market rate partner, but we're not letting that delay the building of the affordable housing because of our fear of losing our financing from the county and Arch. So we are committed to moving this forward. We have a team, especially our design team right now, that's showing themselves to be very adept at staying on top of schedule and moving things forward as fast as they can. So I don't anticipate, I mean, I think that we still don't know what all the challenges are. We don't have all of those reports, but we will have them by the end of August.
If Councilmember Mertz is okay if I invite Deputy City Administrator Snyder to give you a little bit more about the granting information, because that has been an impetus to move faster.
Sure. Although I still do also have two more questions after that.
Yeah. Yep. Hi, Andrea.
Good evening, council. Hi, I'm Deputy Administrator Andrea Snyder, and I've been working with Dan Landis on this project on behalf of the city for five years as deputy city administrator and certainly have appreciated Jillian's involvement in the past several weeks. We are working with the Department of Commerce on what their grant requirements are to make sure that we're fulfilling all of those requirements and meeting their deadlines. So at this point, that work is in progress, and we're happy to continue to update council as need be on any of those details. Are there other specific questions that I may address this time?
I think so. I think my questions are kind of hybrid for maybe both of you. The next question is, is there a risk in completing the schematic design before you have a partner selection? Because it seems like, I mean, we get market rate housing developers all the time who are just telling us, sure, we want to build, but we, you know, we're nervous about your affordable housing component, but in this case, they don't have that, right? But I would imagine that there are decisions at the schematic design level that can impact the pro forma for your market rate partner. So isn't there a risk in making, in doing that work before you have a partner selected?
Yes. And to be clear, we're not planning on doing the schematic design for the market rate building. We're doing the schematic design for our building as well as the design for the entire site. So we are trying to, I mean, we have an interest in leaving enough land for market rate, to keep the market rate developers interested so that we can get a good price for it to recoup some of the money that we've put into it. So that was one of the criteria that influenced us choosing the architecture firm that we did, because they have a lot of experience working with market rate developers and have a good sense of the, you know, unit size and mix that developers in East King County are liking to have. So we're planning on we're planning on moving forward to entitle the site for the number of units and the site improvements, and then also for our specific design. But we're not intending to design a building for a market rate developer.
All right, thank you. And my last question, I know Andrea will have comments on, which is, what's the required public action on this schedule, right? What does council, where are the, you know, where are the decision points where council needs to be involved between now and winter 2027?
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. One of those public actions, especially as we try to build out the Opportunity Center and access those state funds to do so, is an agreement with KCHA. We have been contemplating a condominium agreement. It might be something more like a long-term lease-to-own type thing in order to meet state requirements. We're still working with them on that to iron that out. We have our memorandum of understanding in place with KCHA that would convey ownership of the Opportunity Center to the city. So that's still in place, and we just need to figure out the legal contracting requirements with the Department of Commerce that would allow us to do that. So we're working on that now with Department of Commerce as well as with KCHA. We want to bring that back to council in the fall. We're hopeful that we can come back in September to have that conversation. So there will be an agreement between the city and KCHA that would convey ownership and control over the Opportunity Center, which is to be constructed. That's one of the big things. Another future action for council would be working with the subtenants. So the human services providers, the city has in the past selected Health Point as well as Valley Cities to provide services out of the Opportunity Center. Those are behavioral health services as well as dental services at affordable costs. So we need to work with our would-be tenants on a leasing agreement with our tenants. And so that's another thing that's going to come before council, likely not until the beginning of next year. So that's kind of the schedule we're on with the two big agreements that we foresee council having a direct, we would see council's approval over.
Great. Thank you very much for answering those questions.
Thanks. Councilmember Hall.
First of all, thank you so much for staying so late. Really appreciate it. I'm sure I just forgot this. The intent behind this was always to have a mixed-income project. So is it final that we would have separate buildings for the affordable units and the market rate units?
Yes. So from both perspectives, we have talked with enough market rate developers to know that they want a separate building. And also, we're financing our building with low-income housing tax credits, and the low-income housing tax credit investors have a strong preference to not have any market rate risk associated with what they invest in.
That is a great question. It did come up before. Councilmember Hunt was asking many questions about how we could integrate this better, but the funding stocking is really... Any additional questions or comments for Dan?
So since we have discussed the, trying to make sure that the units were in the same building, which is probably no longer possible, what are your thoughts on how the buildings can be made to look comparable, look like they're part of the same project, not stand out as one being obviously different than the other building?
Well, our preference would be that our market rate partner work with Weber Thompson. We're not going to make that a condition. It will be probably an evaluation factor, however, because we also don't want our housing to stand out as different than the market rate housing, at least from the curb appeal and the sort of availability of balconies and big design features. I don't know that they will look exactly the same, but I think that it will not be easy to tell which is which. We envision this as a community, even though there will be two separate ownerships.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Mertz?
Well, since we're taking comment as well as questions at this point, very excited to have you back today to talk about this. This is an aggressive schedule. I hear a lot of, I mean, I dabble in a little project management with rocketry business, and there's a lot of conditional statements I heard in there and things that are dependent on others. So, but this project continues to be incredibly important for our city. It continues to be a model for transit or development, making the most of our transit system that we have. But it has been seven years, and I'm eager to see it move forward. So appreciate you being here today. I think that, you know, the city's really committed to doing projects like this. We eke out onesie-twosies for affordable housing at the margins on other projects, and here we have a massive project in front of us. So let's figure out how to get it done and let us know what things need to be done on the city side. Thank you.
Any other comments if we're done with questions?
Thank you, Dan. And thank you, Jillian, for working that slide deck. Lots of information. Some may be repetitive, but I don't think it hurts to repeat. So it's been a long slog, Dan. Thank you for coming.
Well, I appreciate your interest. I think you guys are a great partner, and not just you, but the staff that work for you as well. And so we look forward to a long, not a long, it's been long, but let's say a short collaboration on this through the next couple of years.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the mayor's report, and then we have a couple of other items to wrap up. So there is no executive session this evening. I did want to talk a little bit about our Issaquah Farmers Market because they are having another record year. The market has been a tremendous success yet again this summer season, drawing in record numbers of visitors each weekend. The market set a record-high attendance of 5,120 visitors on July 13. The vibrant market has significantly improved access to fresh, regionally grown produce for all of our residents. Our Farmers Market team, led by Kelly Diane Phillips, has focused this year on increasing food access. In partnership with the Issaquah Food Bank, Issaquah Senior Center, and other local organizations, they have distributed nearly $3,000 in food access currency. I'm happy to share that the market has redeemed over $2,500 in EBT and SNAP market match currency, which means over $2,500 going back into local farmers' and food makers' pockets. By providing a direct link between consumers and producers, the Issaquah's farmer market promotes sustainable food practices and strengthens our local economy. I'm so proud of the positive impact this market has had on food access and community well-being in Issaquah. I hope to see you all out for one of our upcoming markets, especially on Saturday, August 10, when we will be celebrating National Farmers' Market Week. So see you at the barn. The city of Issaquah is thrilled to offer a wide variety of summer activities, from concerts on the green every Tuesday, gas station blues on Thursday, and tomorrow night's Chalk Art Festival, and Thursday evenings, Outdoor Shakespeare. These events foster community connection and create memorable experiences for all. We are proud to sponsor these activities with our partners, which not only provide entertainment, but also promote health and wellness throughout our city. There's lots of additional details on the website. Some upcoming events. There will be a Human Services Resource Fair this Tuesday, July 23. Our Issaquah Human Service Team will host a resource fair from 12 to 2:00 in partnership with the Chalk Art Festival. Over 15 local nonprofit organizations will be participating. So come by the community center to learn more about local resources and find ways to get involved in the community. Hiking 101. Rise and shine and come join the City of Issaquah Park Ranger Casey Shane at the High Point Trail headed 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday, July 24 for a short, family-friendly group hike through Tradition Plateau Swamp and Big Tree Trails. Learn about hiking basics and how to properly plan and prepare for your adventure. Discuss trail ethics and leave no trace principles, and learn about some common native wildlife and plant species of the Issaquah Alps. United Communities of Laos Summer Festival. On Saturday, July 27, Lake Samamish State Park will host the Third Annual United Communities of Laos Summer Festival. This annual event features live music, cultural performances, a fashion show, vendors with Laotian food and drink, and vendors selling traditional clothing and merchandise. This event is free and open to the public through an annual or one-day pass, although you do need an annual or one-day pass for the state park. And lastly, a little bit about the upcoming Issaquah Film Festival. Joining the film viewing fun Saturday, August 3, and Sunday, August 4 at Regal Issaquah Highlands at Grand Ridge Plaza for a cinematic experience like no other. From thought-provoking documentaries to heartwarming dramas, there's something for everyone at this year's film festival. Don't miss out on the chance to immerse yourself in the world of cinema and connect with other film enthusiasts. And for all of those activities, you can find additional information at the city's website at issaquahwa.gov, and also how you would purchase tickets for some of these events were necessary.
So that concludes the mayor's report. We will go into good of the order, and I know at least council president has one item for good of the order. Does anybody else have an item? Okay, let's go to council president.
Yeah, so we've got a budget retreat coming up. So I want to make sure everybody knows about it, you know, little important things like that. If anybody wants to come to a meeting from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., where we sit and talk about budget priorities and expenditures and all that. Anyway, Saturday, Tibbetts Manor, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., we are going to provide pastries and coffee for breakfast and mild Thai food for lunch. We've got a lot going on. Look for an email from Deputy Council President, myself, tomorrow, and then also the administration's packet. Not as much homework as we usually have, but a few things that you might want to review for that. And we look forward to seeing everybody there Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Thanks.
Super. Any other good of the order? Deputy Council President DeMichele.
Thank you. I did have an item, and given the late hour, I'm not going to pursue it, but I'll put it together into a memo that you can read at your convenience. I just wanted to point out the banner that's at the north end of Front Street, which is the Influence to Choice banner. This is the second year that they've had one, and wanted to go into a little bit more depth and explain to you about the message that's on that banner. And I will do that in a memo so that we can go home. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. So some of the upcoming meetings have already been discussed. Again, the invite to any of our city electives for the Sound Cities Association Summer Social right here. Council president just talked about the retreat on Saturday, July 27, and invited the whole community. And there will be an August 5 city council meeting, our last for the summer, hopefully our last for the summer. And the anticipated agenda items include the revenue forecast, the resolution in support of Issaquah School District's 2024 bond, and an informational update on the Central Issaquah multimodal I-90 Crossing Project. There is no executive session this evening, which, let me get my clock up, means we are adjourned at 10:03. Thank you all.